Good evening and welcome to the City Council's August 27th regular City Council meeting. I am Cecilia Taylor, the Mayor of Menlo Park. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public, participating virtually and in City Council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. Roll call. I would like to first introduce City Council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Mayor Cecilia Taylor, Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council members Maria Dorr and Betsy Nash. Councilmember Jill Jen Woolison is absent. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stalte, City Attorney Nirah Doherty, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome to our August 27th regular City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, if you are participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. If you are participating in chambers, ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and then return it to me here at the clerk's desk. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item is Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members. Does any of the City Council members wish to pull any items from consent calendar or informational items or reorder the agenda? At this time, I will request that we hear item G1 before item E1. And that is doing the public hearing first before we have the study session. Is Council supportive of that reorder? I would like to reorder item G1, which is the public hearing, before we have our study session, item E1. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. In some instances, speaker time may be limited. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. City Clerk Heron, will you please take general public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Okay, it looks like we currently have 12 speakers. So this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Okay, so-
Should I go ahead?
Uh, hold on one moment, Greg. Let me just make sure I've got all of my speakers in queue.
Oh, you'll let me know.
Yes, I will. All right, so Mayor Taylor, we have a total of, it looks like 12 speakers. So we will be updating public comment to a period of two minutes per speaker. All right. And with that, our first speaker is Greg Conlin, followed by Leah Rogers.
Yes, and I, my address is, is 1280 Sharon Park Drive and a condominium number 39, which I've moved into this month after living in Atherton for over 50 years. And I, uh, just to give a little background, I had two experiences, I think, that are relevant to my running for the council. One is I served on the California Public Utility Commission for six years and served as president for two years, and they regulated the safety on the railroad account trades. So I have that background. And I think that, um, on Atherton, I was on the rail committee for over 20 years. And we were able to get a quiet zone accomplished. Uh, the mayor, Carlson and myself were able to get the, uh, ferroths crossing, uh, quad gates without cost to the city, 15, 20 years ago. And then more recently, we've got the, uh, quad gates on Watkins. And after the two of them, then we have a quiet zone. Uh, and I think where the first quiet zone, Atherton, was in, on the, on the line. So I think my interest, if, if I'm successful on getting on the council, is to keep pursuing the four intersections that Menlo has and try and pursue them where we can at least get a quiet zone for the four intersections. My personal, uh, preference is to have a trench. And I've been fighting for that for over 20 years. And I think that, uh, most people think that it's too expensive. But I, having worked on the PUC, uh, for six years and, and having on the California Transportation Commission also, that I, money comes if you know where to look for it. So I, uh, my goal will be to get enough money to get a trench. I got an interruption here from my phone that I forgot about. All right, well, I think my, my three minutes are pretty well up. And I, and my statement, I think, is on public record as to having a trench through all four intersections as one of my key goals if I'm successful in being elected to the council. So thank you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Leah Rogers, followed by Kevin Cranin.
Hello, my name is Leah Rogers.
Leah, can you get a little closer? You can lift up the mic.
I've lived in Menlo Park 36 years. And the last 29 years, I've lived in the unincorporated part of Menlo Park. And many of the council and the city staff, I just want to thank you for listening to our continued interest in being a part of the city. You all know what a great city it is. We all know. Quite frankly, in the unincorporated areas, we feel like second-class citizens. We don't get to vote for local representation. We go to the farmer's market, we can't sign the petitions. So we're in it, but not really in it. And so, over the last, pretty much a decade, we've been talking to you about this. And what's interesting, I think, I think you'll hear from a lot of other people of how important the greater protection of the heritage trees are in the city and pedestrian and bike safety and more controlled development. All those are well-known advantages. If I could say something that I personally feel is an interesting historical perspective, is that about 10 years ago, I started, um, meeting regularly with Martha Poyatos, who is the, was at that time, the executive of, um, LAFCO. And it's their responsibility to figure out the right boundaries for cities versus counties. There was never a question, from their perspective, that it made sense. Cities know about taking care of neighborhoods and services. And counties take care of airports and hospitals, bigger issues. Now, obviously, Menlo Park is incredibly busy. None of the staff has got spare time, I know. But this is perhaps been on the back burner because it maybe hasn't risen to, um, your attention. Or we haven't had critical mass. We've been really close over the years. So I just want to say that, you know, about 10 years ago, LAFCO signed all the paperwork. We did all the petitions, we walked the streets. We got well more than the required number of citizens to say they wanted to be a part of the city. It was a done deal as far as they were concerned. And they offered to help negotiate between the county and the city about any of these other issues that seem to come up about. Is there deferred maintenance? They talked about it as a dowry for the, um, triangle. So I just encourage you all to bring this back. We've obviously been through a pandemic. Everyone's kind of trying to remember where they were on various issues. We continue to have a really strong neighborhood support for this. And just tell us, you know, how you see it. Why is it that we can't move forward from your perspective? We would really appreciate it because we think you guys have some great leadership. And maybe this is a time, it's a great idea, maybe it's the time to do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kevin Cranin, followed by Greg Ferris, with donated time from Andrea Bellin and Robert Ferris.
Hello, Council, this is, I'm Kevin Cranin. I'm a 25, no, I'm a 26-year resident of Menlo Park, along with my wife Catherine. Uh, we raised two kids here, two lovely kids, and love the city. Um, first, I wanted to thank you guys for getting through a housing element through the state process. So we now have a state-sanctioned housing element, really a plan for the city for the next eight years. Uh, one that actually includes more housing. That's something I like because I've got two kids who want to live here and I don't want to have to die before they come here to live. Um, but I do want to know what we want to do about the projects that are violators of this now-confirmed city plan. Projects like the 80 Willow Project, that's one of the Sunset site, that is just defies the city plan, the housing element, on many, many levels. It's going to create a housing deficit because it employs more people than it actually houses. It's also a problem because it stomps on that whole area. It's not even an opportunity site. There's a bunch of opportunity sites around it that are actually, if it's built, cannot really live to their full potential. And finally, it's just got a scale that's well out of scale of even the housing plan, the future housing plan for this city. We're talking about towers that are taller than the Statue of Liberty. I've heard somebody say that they are going to be the tallest towers, if built, between San Francisco and Los Angeles. Not San Jose, but between San Francisco and Los Angeles, which strikes me as well out of scale and something that we don't want for the city. Um, I realize that we're here today because of the builder's remedy, which is a loophole. But I think we got our plan in on time, or at least, you know, relatively on time. And we shouldn't be penalized for, um, you know, having to go through one extra iteration in the process. And I don't think the state intends that either. So I want to know, and I want to try and figure out with the city, with whoever else in this community, how do we stop this thing from being built and get developers to build what we want them to build and what we planned for them to build rather than what they want to build? That's going to be our next big challenge. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Greg Ferris, as mentioned, with donated time, followed by Jenny Michelle. And Greg, if you could, just give me a couple of seconds here to bring up your presentation as well. Okay, just about ready. Okay, go ahead and start.
Good evenings. My name is Greg Ferris and live at 2042 Santa Cruz Avenue in the Triangle. Um, I want to thank you, um, City Council members and city staff for your service. Supervisor Mueller said he'd be here tonight. And unless he's joined remotely recently, I, I'm sorry, because I confirmed twice with his assistant. Um, also attending, uh, joining us is Rob Bortoli from LAFCO. Uh, he won't be making a statement, but he can, uh, answer questions. Um, so I particularly wanted to talk about the triangle. And on the next slide, uh, you can see where it's located. Uh, it's a little fuzzy, but, uh, West Menlo Park, the center of this, uh, um, unincorporated, uh, county part. If we go on the next slide, it zooms in a bit. Um, and I just wanted to point out the triangle is very consequential. So it's where two major, the, the two major arteries of West Menlo Park split at the Y. That's the Alameda and Santa Cruz Avenue. Also, um, uh, on Sharon, it's a route to school, to Launtra School. Also Sharon is the route that, uh, people who live in West Menlo Park get to, uh, East Menlo Park, particularly if they want to get to Middle. And then finally, for most people who want to bicycle from Menlo Park, they traverse along Santa Cruz Avenue, right past the triangle to get to Sand Hill Road and the bike rides in Portola Valley and in the mountains. On the next slide, we can see, uh, exactly what the annexations propose. This is from, uh, 2017, I think, uh, from the study session. Uh, but you can see that the triangle is surrounded by the city on all three sides. And all three corners are touching the city. And in fact, if you look at the perimeter, 60% of the perimeter faces the city. So we're very much part of the city. And this mixture, this patchwork boundaries is creating problems for getting safety improvements in the, in the, uh, in our area. And, uh, I don't, I sent the slides yesterday. I don't know if you, some of you may have had chances, uh, to look at them. Uh, but it summarizes some of the problems that are, that both the city and the county have had in trying to take care of, uh, safety improvements in this area. On the next slide, um, there's a timeline. I won't go into all this, but I just want to point out that there was a study session in 2017, at which point the, the staff said this is going to be expensive to fix Alameda. That's no longer an issue. The Alameda is being fixed by the county, being paid for by the state. Also in 2019, uh, 2017, the staff, uh, the City Council voted no on annexation. 2019, it was brought back up, they voted yes. But no progress has been made since then that I, that I have seen. Next slide, some of the advantages of annexation. I think I'll cover some of these, uh, a little bit later. Um, but, uh, local and law enforcement is, is important to us. Our, we're served by the sheriff. And I can outline three rather disturbing, uh, scenarios. One, somebody had a stranger in their yard. The sheriff refused to come. Someone was assaulted and the assailant was pursuing them home. Uh, and the deputy said they didn't want to get involved. Another case, uh, and you got an email about this, but, uh, a woman had intruders in her yard. Uh, the sheriff wasn't coming. She called together neighbors to protect her. This isn't how it should work. We would like to have local police serving us right here in Menlo Park, just like you have, instead of coming from Redwood City. Um, I think I'd like to skip ahead here, uh, at least one, another slide. Um, so we've been waiting nine years since we formally applied. Uh, we have also formally applied to LAFCO, also in 2015. We think it's long enough. Stanford's annexation was approved in three months. Uh, and, uh, would like to see this happen. Uh, people ask me why I'm still pursuing this. And frankly, since we moved in, three people have been killed by cars within four blocks where we live. And I just would like to see things change. On the next slide. Uh, okay, city's lost about a million dollars in revenue. There's also costs that would have happened. Um, but anyhow, that's, I'd like to, that's one of the changes. Next slide. I mentioned about law enforcement. Next slide. Would like to be able to vote. So District Five is open. None of us can run and none of us can vote. Um, we've been looking for the ability to vote for nine years. Next slide. Uh, this outlines, and there's a link at the bottom, that's the LAFCO document that they generated and, uh, within one year of getting our application. There's two things that have to be done to finish annexation. Pre-zoning and environmental review. Uh, it's residential, it should just stay residential. I don't think there's debate about that. Uh, environmental approval should be straightforward. There's no construction involved. The second is negotiating the tax revenue. Uh, and I don't think there's much of a range in there either. It's maybe between, uh, 10.5, 10, 10.8%. Could just pick a value. Next slide. Road safety, and I don't think I'll have time to go through this. But the, in these slides, you can find six different funded and approved projects that the triangle was left out. Six funded and approved projects. This is a structural failure because we're surrounded by the city. We're not part of the city. City can't do things for us. And the county, county struggles to do things for us too because we're surrounded by the city. The next slide, um, shows the- Next slide shows, uh, uh, speed reduction from 30 to 25 by the county. They stopped when they got to the, oh, I'm sorry, this is by the city. We may have skipped a slide. Anyway, they stopped, uh, both the city and the county separately reduced the speed limit to 25. They each stopped a block short of, of where we are, where the, where the jurisdiction changes. The county has pursued improvements on both, on Santa Cruz and the Alameda. Also Santa, uh, the original proposal included improvements on Santa Cruz north of the Y. That was dropped because the, because there's only a block before it starts into the city. Fortunately, on the west side of the triangle, those improvements are being made, pushed by the county, paid for by the state. On the right side, no, it was just dropped. So that's lost. Next slide. Um, I'm confused. We, we, uh, next slide. Uh, sidewalks to Launtra School only extended for one block of the two blocks of Sharon because the other one was in the county. Next slide. Bike lane on Santa Cruz, paid for. The city, the county was restriping the roads. Neighbor said, "Let's put in a bike lane, dedicated bike lane because it's uphill. The sheroes aren't working for the bikes." County came back and said, "No can do because it's not going to mesh with what this, with the, with the city's doing." We're, we're just, we just want to see things change. We want to be one jurisdiction. We want to see safe things happen. Next slide. Uh, I think we're going backwards. Okay. Uh, the latest, the Berkeley SafeTrack study. The green stars show you the intersections that were part of this study. The red, uh, stars are very important intersections that happen to be in the triangle. So the city has identified this corridor, Santa Cruz Avenue, getting to Sand Hill Road as critical for safety. But there's a gap. And there's a gap only because of this patchwork jurisdiction. So the patchwork jurisdiction is make, is preventing progress. Both the city wants to make things safer, county wants to make things safer, but they're stymied by this patchwork jurisdiction. And I do understand that fiscal, uh, impacts are important. I think safety is also important. And we should not neglect the safety and what the implications are for moving forward. So enclosure, I'd like you to finally move ahead. Nine years is too long. LAFCO has been waiting for eight years. There are only two things that they need in order to get this onto, uh, for them to hold a public hearing. And I'd say, don't do anything fancy. Don't look at annexing the whole western, uh, unincorporated region. Just do those two things and get it to LAFCO and let's get this going. Would like to be able to vote or run for office, just like you can. Would like to have law enforcement right here in Menlo Park like you have. Um, and it's time to move on. Thank you for your attention, your service.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Jenny Michelle, followed by John Butler.
Uh, dear Mayor, I'm Jenny Michelle D3, resident, personal comments. As we head into September Suicide Prevention Month, sadly, we all just experienced an unthinkable loss of a local mentor and treasured grandson from MA High School. For clarity, I'm what a person who has struggled with suicidal ideation looks like. The biggest question I had was, how do you know when you need help? How do you know if you're actually in crisis? When is it bad enough worth calling for help? How do you know when you're actually suicidal? For me, it started out as thoughts like, I would be better off not here. If it gets too bad, I can just leave. The world would be better if I was not here. I'm not good enough to be here. I'm a sinner, I deserve to suffer. God has abandoned me. I don't deserve happiness or joy or success. If hiding in this cabinet doesn't work, I'll get abused again. I can end it. I can't handle the pain any longer. I just need it to end. I'm literally no one. I'm a loser. And no one will notice when I'm gone. Many will be glad when I'm gone. No one likes me. I'm fugly, uneducated, and I have health issues. I'm a burden. Why am I here? I blew the deadline. Our client fired us. I'm a failure. Do any of these sound familiar to you? You are not alone. We, or it was not safe for me to speak to my parents or my family. If you don't feel comfortable speaking to your family, a friend, or by dialing 988, call NAMI, call Cora, call Kara, reach out to me. Text, message, post, call, make eye contact. We're here to help. Splash water on your face. No one can tell you how you feel. That power lies solely with you. If you feel that someone was unprofessional to you, that's what happened. If someone sexually harassed or abused you when you said no or it was inappropriate, that happened. If someone was hurtful or you felt excluded, that happened. If you were bullied like I am currently, that's happening. And that's your agency. Don't buy into the darkness. Stay here with me. Hold my hand. The crossroad to stay or go will keep coming as you walk through life. It's okay, keep going. If I can make it, so can you. Every person is an entire universe. You are valued, loved, and important. Please stay here and be my neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. I'm John Butler. Go right ahead.
Hi again. I'm John Butler, resident of downtown Menlo Park for 35 years, eight months, and 27 days. And proud to be here. Tomorrow night, Wednesday at 6:30 at St. Ravens Parish Hall, we are having a mental health support group, uh, which is called NAMI Connections. NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Comms. And, um, sorry, I'm a little uncomfortable tonight because the subject of suicide is very personal. Yeah. So, um, geez, I should be used to this. Um, I apologize. I have over 40 years of lived experience with mental health challenges, suicidal thinking, alcoholism, addiction. I've talked about these things before. For some of us, these things never end in our lives and in tragedy. And for some of us, we realize that there are support groups. I have some of these flyers back there like NAMI Connections. I'm the co-facilitator of this support group tomorrow. I hope you all attend. I hope you will invite others. The mental health community has been, uh, my savior. There are spiritual experiences to me and the mental health community with connection between friendships we have. And I'm fortunate that you, you Councilor Nash and you Mayor Taylor are meeting with, uh, myself and Michelle Birch on Thursday on Zoom to discuss creating a suicide prevention collaborative here in Menlo Park and ideally involving and joining cities, possibly Redwood City and East Palo Alto. We're privileged to have your time. This is very important to me that for these years that I've been here, that you've welcomed me back and you're supporting us now, Michelle and I, with having this meeting. Um, Menlo Park is a treasure for me. I feel I belong here. It's been my home for the longest time in any part of my life. And I appreciate the chance to be of service to my community. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comment. And our- And our next speaker will be Henry Riggs, followed by Brian Schmidt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Henry Riggs, Laurel Ly Manor. The first slide is up and it doesn't exactly align with what I've written and I'm going to try to compress into two minutes. So maybe I'll just sort of wave from time to time. On February 2 of this year, at her request, I sent Nikki Nagaya a list of five, perhaps non-critical, public works items that were in need of attention in my neighborhood. At least one item was at least a year old. I actually did research and found that it was 10 years old. I was told I would hear from the respective departments. I did not hear. On May 15, I followed up directly with Azalea Mitch with the same list, again with no response, although there is a claim conflating a sixth issue with a response. On June 11, I emailed Justin noting the lack of department response to the list. I include all three emails at the end of this presentation. Next slide. As of last week, August, all five items remain in need of city attention. The first item that you saw is the maintenance of the Hetch Hetchy Strip on Bay Road. Our neighborhood has been asking for follow-through on the commitment that the city made to the SFPUC 60 years ago for almost that entire time. What you see above is sidewalk work to install three utility boxes. Apparently, no engineer was assigned to monitor this work. The farm work remains there after more than a year. I'll note that the traffic cones also remained there for three months. Next slide. The park at Marsh Road has not been watered in approximately three years. There is virtually no grass left. It is all weeds, but it is mowed about every two weeks. Next slide. The traffic island. Go to the next slide. And the next. This is a pothole that appeared in mid-January. Basically, it was a sinking of a patch that was roughly 6 by 12 at the time. I brought that to the attention of Public Works. It was filled. It was then filled again three months later. It was filled again about two, three, four weeks ago. Each of the attempts to fill it has been using what I call roofing cement, no paving. As you can see, it simply sloughs out when drivers go over it. Next slide. This is the traffic island just across from that patch. That traffic island is on the other side of the slight mound that is the railroad tracks. Vehicles at night in particular, but also in bad weather such as the rain, can simply not see the island. It projects slightly out into the lane. What you see there in the upper portion of the picture is a depression filled with water from landscape irrigation that was made by a SUV or pickup truck that simply ran over the island. I went out myself and put a reflector on a stick, and it was mowed down within 18 hours. I'm sorry, I will try to wrap up quickly. I regret having to bring these simple items here to you tonight. No city management should be three levels deep, incapable of addressing five such issues in one area. But this is your city staff in 2024. It should not be my job to bird dog these items. I hope tonight, I think it's on your calendar for later tonight, you will take this complacency to heart and ask to set the bar a little higher for Menlo Park. I'm available for specifics now or subsequently. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Brian, give me just one moment to bring back up our timer. And so our next speaker is going to be Brian Schmidt, followed by Hauke Schmidt.
Good evening, Brian Schmidt from Menlo Spark. I wanted to just briefly pass along some good news. I think you'll love to hear. The first, to our knowledge, multifamily full electrification of existing housing in San Mateo County is starting now. It started last week, and we hope to have it completed next week. And it is here in Menlo Park, actually in Bellhaven. And it is affordable housing, 100% affordable housing. Menlo Spark is the primary funder. There are other funders as well. We're working through and with the great cooperation of Mid Peninsula Housing to have this happen at Willow Court. So I had a chance to go out there and see what's happening out there. They're getting rid of all the gas-fired equipment. Everything is electric. I talked to a resident. She was very happy to have that, to have air conditioning for the first time in light of the heat waves that we've had. And there's another number of other renovations that are happening at the same time. Menlo Spark's Director of Electrification, Angela Evans, is running things for Marsa. And once the whole project is completed, we'll have a full package for how this is done. The fact that it is existing housing is especially important because that's considered to be the harder nut to crack as opposed to new construction, and we're doing it. So I think this is proof of concept and one that we hope to see spread throughout Menlo Park and throughout the rest of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Hauke Schmidt, followed by Rajene Schmidt.
Madam Mayor, hello. My name is Hauke Schmidt. We have a lot of Schmids tonight, but we're not related. Except my wife and myself. We live in Menlo Park on Santa Cruz, close to Alameda. And I wanted to take the opportunity to also give my support to the topic of annexating the Triangle area. We live in Menlo Park since 16 years. We love the city very much. We go walking every evening in the area. And just the first and final stretch along Santa Cruz Avenue is just very dangerous to walk by because of high-traffic speeds. Lot of accidents happen there. And of course, we want to be part of the cultural and political life of Menlo Park and vote there as well. So thank you for your consideration of this topic. We hope that you can bring this forward.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Rajene Schmidt at 2067 Santa Cruz, another voice for a triangle annexation. Back in 2015, I stood here, same spot. And at that point, we were here seven years, and now we're 16 years in the same spot. This is the longest we've ever lived anywhere, and this is a testament how much we love Menlo Park. And to me, the same thing goes as Greg Ferris. So eloquently put together, the four main parts that are important are safety. The sidewalks, as my husband just alluded to, are either nonexistent in that first stretch or they are so uneven that you almost break a foot if you really don't. I can't imagine someone who's elderly or doesn't pay attention. It's really dangerous. There's the accidents that happen all the time because of speeding. And traffic safety is really a concern, and we've been left out of that. In fact, where the road narrows into the right side, when you bear right on Santa Cruz and go toward downtown, you're encouraged to speed up to 30, where we have 25 miles per hour in the city, within the city limits. And there was also rightfully done lots for the seniors at the Menlo Commons. There's even a sign, which is all great, and we would love to be included in that. Second, very close to my heart are all the heritage oaks that the city of Menlo Park does so beautifully protect, and more so than the county, it seems. The third point is voting. Voting for Menlo Park, the community we love, that would be lovely. And then lastly, I would really love the local law enforcement and police to serve us. That would be really, really important to us because we have heard the same stories that Greg told about people who had no support when they most needed it. And Menlo Park Police is just great. I mean, that's all I can say, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Ethan Edwards, followed by Ron Snow.
Hello, I am Ethan Edwards. I live in the area currently under consideration for annexation into Menlo Park. And I know that previous speakers have already touched on the administrative nightmare. It appears that it's, that we are already in the ninth year of this being under process, and I really urge this council to complete it as soon as possible. I think the biggest area of concern that I have is the intersection just up the road from where I am, where Sharon crosses Alameda de Las Pogas. This is a very important route for people going from Santa Cruz to Alameda, and it's also an important route for children going to Laundra. It's also been the site of four recent car accidents. And drivers really just aren't paying attention during rush hour when children are crossing. And so that, and so there was a plan to narrow the road from, narrow Alameda from four lanes down to three. But it appears that that plan has fallen through. And so that intersection is simply an accident waiting to happen. Santa Cruz 2 really needed that protected bike lane. But it appears that that also fell through. And so I think this just underscores the need for annexation of the triangle into Menlo Park so we can get these necessary improvements complete, which are necessary for safety and for expedient travel.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and our final speaker will be Ron Snow. Ron, you should be able to unmute your end at this time.
All right. Yeah, I'm Ron Snow. I live in Menlo Park in the unincorporated areas. I was hoping that Supervisor Ray Mueller would have been here as I was thinking of granting him my time in support of the triangle annexation. If he's still online, maybe I can grant whatever remains here. I hope the council will advance action on this request to annex the unincorporated triangle bordered by Santa Cruz Avenue, Sharon Road, and Alameda de Las Pogas. Council is aware of the benefits of annexation, and these far exceed any arguments against. The majority of the citizens that live in the triangle have been advocating for this for many years. Please take action to start the due diligence and the other steps needed to make a positive decision for annexation. County does not properly support safety for these neighbors, leaving unacceptable dangers and higher risks. Menlo Park citizens have to use the roads that border this triangle and would benefit by the city's incorporation and the resulting oversight. It is important that the city council, each of you, take this annexation as an active project. In other words, get it on to future agendas and start the process of discussion and not just brush it off as what appears to be happening over these last several years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, having no further hands or cards, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for everyone who provided public comment this evening. The next item on our agenda is item G1. Public hearings are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The public hearing this evening is to consider a city council call-up of the planning commission's approval of a use permit and architectural control permit to demolish an existing service station and construct a new service station, including a convenience store and a car wash for Chevron, and a use permit to allow concurrent sale of beer and wine for off-premises consumption with motor vehicle fuel and 24-hour operations for the fueling pumps and limited 24-hour operations for the convenience store in the C2S Neighborhood Commercials Special Zoning District at 1399 Willow Road. Vice Mayor Holmes.
Okay, so two things. I do want to step back a bit with regards to the public comment. And just with respect to the fact that we did have multiple community members, larger community members, community in a larger sense, come and speak specifically about the annexation application with regards to the triangle. And so while the council can't have a substantive discussion about that, given that it's not on the agenda, we can turn to staff and see, like, if there is information of any value we can provide to these residents about where things currently stand with regards to this application. I can say from my perspective or understanding, it is not on any agenda or is not scheduled to be on any agenda as any sort of item between now and the end of the year, as far as I understand. Someone can correct me. And that at this moment, there is no staff time being devoted to this and that there isn't any specific direction as it relates to this item as far as next steps. So that's my understanding of the situation. And if staff can provide some either confirmation of that or provide information that's contrary to that, I do think it's important that we're responsive, given the concerns expressed.
Yes, through the mayor, I can speak to that. I can respond to the two statements that the vice mayor had and also share a little bit more that I think the two statements were, there's nothing scheduled through the end of this calendar year. That is accurate, and there's no staff time being spent on this at this point in time. And that's a reflection of, you know, direction to date in terms of how this ranks in terms of overall priorities. And there's some issues in terms of processing time, the time spent to process the application. I did speak with, I've spoken with Mr. Ferris a number of times and spoke with him again today. So until such time that there's actually council direction to prioritize this, as the council may be aware, we do have some overall staffing challenges, especially within Public Works and Community Development, the two departments that play the biggest role in this. So.
Okay, and so just following, I will ask, when we get to that, that the item be agendized for some direction because I do think it's fair to the residents that if the city isn't going to move, if this isn't a priority, that the city council very clearly expresses that to these residents, and so that they're not wasting their time. Because they've been coming to meetings and go planning sessions and priority sessions since I've been on council. since I've been on council, obviously this predates me. I think that the unincorporated people have probably been in this chamber more often than a lot of actual residents in Menlo Park. And so I do think that we owe them like that answer, right? Because I think this is government at its worst when it ignores people and give them the impression that something is happening when something is really not happening. And it's only when you've spent a decade of your life thinking that something is happening, then you realize, oh, wait, nothing was never happening, and the joke was on me. And I do think that that's disappointing. We can make a decision as a city that, like, we don't want to annex this area, and that's totally fine. Like, right, that's a legitimate decision for a number of reasons. But I do think we owe both LAFCO and these residents an answer. Okay, so that's where I stand on that. The other issue is item G, is that I am recusing myself from item G. I appreciate the mayor for reordering this so that I'm not sort of stepping out in the middle of a meeting. So while my employer is not the applicant here with regards to this situation, they are a key stakeholder and have interests and how the city council determines or decides on this issue. So I think in that scenario, it's appropriate that I recuse myself. And so I would be recusing myself from item G1.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Moving back to item G1, here to introduce this item is our senior planner, Chris Tucker. I'm sorry, Chris Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and council members. Senior Planner, Chris Turner. I'm joined with Assistant Community Development Director Kyle Perata. And we are discussing the city council call-up of the 1399 Willow Road project today. So very briefly, to give a quick overview. Okay, yeah, so my understanding is that the mayor would like to give a statement first. And then we can go into a very brief staff presentation, applicant presentation, and then clarifying questions and public comment. That's okay.
Thank you. And I called this item up several weeks ago because I attended a community meeting in the neighborhood, and there were concerns that had not been addressed by residents regarding the wine and beer permit, but also just the overall quality of life impacts from the construction of not just the gas station, but also the realignment. Based on what I heard, I sent an email to the city requesting that this item come before council. I believe that this was the right decision to make because it gave myself and Councilmember Nash an opportunity to talk to both the applicant Chevron Signature and also Meta, just about where the city is with our environmental justice element and concerns that have been brought up in that discussion, and that is in that draft. So it was an opportunity for the project applicants to actually look at what community members were concerned about. So that part I am very grateful for. The applicant has notified both Councilmember Nash and I and the city that they would be withdrawing their request for a use permit to allow the off-site sales of beer and wine. And so in light of that, I believe, well, I'm satisfied with that. And so I'm not sure if the applicant Chevron is still wanting to actually do a presentation. But since the concerns that we had were actually addressed, there isn't anything further that I am interested in doing. I'd like to thank Chevron for their humble ear and also for understanding the concerns that we brought and also with the city and also with the Signature team as well. And my introduction is over.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So getting back to the presentation, in light of the discussion, there have been some changes that staff is proposing to to the resolution. So as you noted, that updates to the project include the applicant has withdrawn their request for the use permit for the request of off-sale beer and wine. And then as part of that, the applicant intends to remove the beer cave from the approved project and then reduce the size of the convenience store to accommodate that. So accordingly, there have been some, there are some proposed changes to the resolution, which would now deny the call-up and uphold the planning commission's approval of the project with the following modifications, which would be to remove the use permit approval of beer and wine sales per the applicant's request, and then revise the conditions of approval. The proposed updates to the conditions would be to delete condition 2E, which essentially removes the approval of the off-site beer and wine and the conditions surrounding it. We would need to modify condition 2F, which would read as follows. Hours of operation of the convenience store shall be limited to 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with the exception of limited service and retail items permitted to be sold through the night drawer between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. We would then add condition 2K regarding the change of the convenience store footprint. It would read simultaneous with the submit all of a complete building permit application, the applicant shall revise the project plans to reduce the size of the convenience store footprint and eliminate beer cave. The project plans shall demonstrate that the architectural style, colors, and materials remain consistent with the approved project plans included as Exhibit A to this resolution and that the general footprint and location of the convenience store is substantially consistent with the preliminary revised site plan dated August 27, 2024, included as Exhibit G to this resolution, subject to review and approval by the Planning Division. I will note that the applicant did submit a conceptual site plan showing the update to the footprint, which would be attached as an additional exhibit. And then just to highlight some conditions that staff had already added to the conditions of approval, conditions 2H through 2J would basically ensure compliance with the outside permitting agencies with regard to underground storage tanks. And with that, I think. We'll pass it up to you, actually go back to, so the recommendation, again, to reiterate, would be to adopt a modified resolution denying the call-up and upholding the planning commission's approval with the following modifications. These permit for the service station and limited approval of the use permit for service station and limited 24-hour operations, excluding the sale of beer and wine, and then approving the architectural control permit. And this would include staff's recommended modified conditions of approval. And with that, can take any questions?
Thank you. And if there are not any clarifying questions from council, I'd like to go to public comment at this time. At this time, City Clerk Heron, I'd like to open the hearing so that we can take public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our public hearing item G1, consider a city council call-up for the planning commission's approval of a use permit for the Chevron station at 1399 Willow Road. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, completing a speaker card at the back table, and returning to me at the clerk's desk. I currently have two speakers on this item, so this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item G1. Our first speaker will be Pam Jones, followed by Marlene and Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Pam D. Jones, a resident of Menlo Park, the Bellhaven neighborhood. And first, I have to thank you, the council, for working this out. Thank Chevron Signature and Meta because they addressed most of the concerns, but of course, I have a couple more. I do belong to several organizations, but I'm representing only myself. My concerns are as follow. We have the updated environmental safety element and the environmental justice element and safety element, which you mentioned. But we also have coming forth a new updated heritage tree ordinance. And because of these new documents, I doubt that in 2020 that the heritage tree ordinance from then was as comprehensive as it is now. And it's concerning to remove trees and then not have, it's not just having the space to replant them, but the amount of money considered was $60,000. And I don't think $60,000 is anywhere near what the replacement can be of heritage trees. At some point with this demolition and the construction of a new gas station and realignment, Hamilton Avenue and Willow Road will not be accessible to bikes and cars. So I request at least 90 days prior to the beginning of the realignment, complete details, including the timeline of the project, is made available to all the residents, every single resident in the Bellhaven neighborhood. And we also need some kind of circulation plan that prevents cut-through traffic, you know, congesting our community. The reason I bring that up is because we're doing the village in bits and pieces. So there's like nine architectural control things. And so we don't get the whole thing of the realignment. There's not like all the details of the realignment being approved at one time. In addition to that, there is going to be the entrance, an elevator and walkway to the overhead park, elevated park. And that's going to be near the railroad tracks. Well, even though we're going to gain some parking on that, on the east side of Hamilton Avenue, we will gain some. We don't know how many people are going to be all excited, excuse me, about coming to the park. And they're going to want to park on the Bellhaven side. And if they're not all, we don't know how many are going to be able to, you know, they're coming or how the cars can be parked there or whether they're going to end up being parked on the residential streets. So those are my, the concerns I had left. But again, I really want to thank everybody for working this out. And I just, I see that this is exactly what we want. Because I have always said that Meta does, is a good neighbor, wants to be and is a good neighbor, trying to do the right thing. And I know they motivate the people working for them. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Marlene and Dennis.
Hi, I'm Marlene Centoyo, resident of Bellhaven. Thank you, councilmembers, staff, for reviewing this item. And thank you, Mayor Taylor, for bringing this item up into our attention. I live right next to 1399 Willow Road. And when all these plans were, like, made and everything, I'm not really sure if it was taken into consideration that there would be apartment complex right next to this site with the construction noise, pollution, and everything that comes with this, like, project. And also the community awareness and the, and the community input in this decision. I spoke to over 40 residents for the past two weeks, and none of them knew about this proposal and had major concerns about the impacts on their health and how it wasn't very compatible with what the city has been doing with the environmental justice element. In particular, the canopy, 40 trees will be cut down, including 11 heritage, and only 18 new trees will be planted. We already have a very low canopy in Bellhaven. We have lots of traffic congestion, noise, and light pollution. I'm right on Willow and can hear all the cars as they pass by. So the added noise from the construction, the light for the site, and impacted air quality and groundwater contamination that can possibly be done from this project is irreversible. And just wanting to make sure that the city has enough input from the community before making this decision. I'm really happy to hear that the sale of alcohol was withdrawn, or the permit for that. The store at the moment is open 24 hours, so you can go in there and buy milk. I know of a lot of, including myself, a lot of residents go in there to buy a snack. We're already in a food desert and lots of the stores closed by 8:00 p.m. So being able to go there and get a quick bite is really helpful. So for it to be closed by 10:00 p.m., I'm a bit concerned for that. And I think that's all I really have to say, but I really appreciate this item being brought up to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Dennis. And Marlene will also be transiting.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Denise, soy residente de la comunidad Bellhaven. Mi preocupación más grande es acerca de la contaminación que va a generar al querer mover lo que es la estación de gas. Tanto mi familia, yo y la comunidad desconocíamos de este proyecto, el cual...
Hello, my name is Denise. I am resident of Bellhaven, and I'm very concerned about this project and the contamination that it might cause. Just like my family and I, we weren't aware of this project.
El cual creo que se pudo haber planeado antes de la construcción de los edificios que se hicieron para la comunidad de Bellhaven, donde se pudo tomar en cuenta otras opciones. No decidir mover la gasolinera para poder ampliar la calle de Hamilton. Es lo que más nos preocupa, la contaminación que se va a crear. ¿Qué otras opciones podemos tener para evitar que se mueva la gasolinera de Hamilton?
We question and wonder whether there's other options that don't require the shifting of Hamilton and the destruction of Chevron so that we can still access the grocery store in Willow Village.
Quiero hacer énfasis que la comunidad Bellhaven desconoce de este proyecto que se ha echado a andar. La preocupación más grande es qué opciones nos van a dar para poder enmendar o evitar que se mueva la gasolinera Chevron.
I want to make it known that not many Bellhaven residents are aware of this project. And it would be great to know what the different options are to amend this project so that the Hamilton Avenue doesn't have to be reconfigured. And prior to that statement, she also wanted to add, like, just the major concerns or contamination that this will have on the community.
Como comunidad hemos escuchado que se ha hablado con los dueños de la estación de gas. Pero, ¿por qué no consultaron con la comunidad Bellhaven?
So we're aware that this conversation was had with Chevron, but what about the community? Where was that conversation?
Me gustaría que este punto se tome en consideración y que seamos escuchados los residentes de Bellhaven. Gracias.
I hope that my comments are included and that Bellhaven is represented in these, in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, having no further hands or cards on this item, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron, and thank you for all of the public comment. And at this time, I will close the public comment and bring the conversation to the dais for city council members.
So I very much appreciate Mayor Taylor bringing this forward and bringing the community voices forward. And I'm very appreciative of Chevron. Nancy Yost is here tonight, who was just a wonderful partner talking with us about the various options. And also Mike Giometti and Eric Harrison from Signature. And just a very productive conversation. And I really appreciate your flexibility and willing to work with us and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I've not been round-acted, so I have less context of the conversations that have been going on with Chevron. And I'm glad to hear that there was dialogue and conversation there. I also deeply appreciate the comments from residents of Bellhaven who have raised some concerns about the project, additional concerns. And I'm curious, Mayor Nash, sorry, it's Mayor Taylor or Councilwoman Nash, if there's any other response or... I'm curious if these kind of comments have been taken into account in the conversations that you all had, and would just love to hear more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. And the answer is yes. A part of the concerns that community members have will be addressed through the mitigation measures. They are listed in the staff report. They are not translated. Also, as far as the closure, it is my understanding that the realignment of Willow Road and Hamilton will, one, improve the safety measures for both pedestrians and bicyclists and probably cars as well. Two, it is actually a direct path to the new grocery store. One concern that I, well, I wanted to know, I would like to know, how soon before the realignment will the grocery store be opened? So I'm always looking at what's in front for the community to enjoy. And that part I have not gotten the answer to. However, the concerns around air quality, the concerns around the safety of the gas tanks, which this would actually provide more safety. The construction of a new facility provides the new mitigation measures that are needed to make sure that it is safer. It's not to say a gas station is safe in a residential area, but I believe it will be safer with the new gas station. And then also, as I shared earlier, there is still opportunity for the community to have a conversation with Signature. They are actually doing the project for Chevron. So that's where those conversations can happen and will happen. The project is not happening tomorrow. There is still time to continue community conversations. A part of the outreach that community members some have participated in came with the Willow Village outreach, which has been happening, I think even prior to me being on council. So this has been going on for probably about maybe six years, is my understanding. There is still time to have more dialogue about what the impacts are. I'm very concerned about it too, because I see construction happening in, near, around our community for almost a decade, which is very concerning. I will not be sitting in this seat 10 years from now, but what decisions we make will impact what happens in 10 years. And so maintaining that community dialogue is extremely important for Signature or for any developer in Menlo Park. It's very important that you keep the community informed. And we always need to improve that communication because sometimes we do not do the best job that we can. But keeping us accountable and bringing challenges to us, your issues, your concerns are very important. So I hope you stay a part of the community, the conversation, especially if you are right next door to the gas station. Your input is critical. And I'm hoping that once the gas station is completed, it continues to fulfill some of the needs that community members have for an after-hours store. But I'm, I want more for our community, so it's not just a convenience store. I'm looking at the whole picture.
To address the trees, I think we all are very, very concerned about the canopy across the city and most particularly in Bellhaven and the Bayfront area. The trees were part of the November development agreement and have already been approved for removal. And I don't believe that is up for discussion in the future, although I will tell you that Signature has been extremely willing to talk with us and do whatever they can to work with the city and the community. But those are, the trees, I believe, are, have already been approved for removal quite a while ago.
And one other thing to add around the trees, there is a part of the cap, which I don't have the full list in front of me, is a urban forestry master plan that is being done. I believe that that project will definitely be completed before any groundbreaking for Willow Village. So there is still time to have input and to make sure that we increase our tree canopy specifically in the Bellhaven neighborhood. There's still time for that to happen. And there are things listed in the cap that will address it in the climate action plan, which is on the agenda for tonight. So I hope you all stay for that conversation. That is actually our, our next item, our study session. Councilmember Dorr, did you have any other questions for Councilmember Nash? You're welcome.
Your leadership.
Through the, through the mayor, I just would like to clarify the tree question. So as, as part of Willow Village, there were a number of heritage tree removals approved on this site through review of this specific proposal for the redevelopment of the Chevron. Eight additional heritage trees that were not approved during the heritage, during the Willow Village process needed to be removed. Those got an additional heritage tree removal permit that was reviewed and approved and not appealed. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Not all of the trees were approved. As part of Willow Village, there were additional trees.
Thank you. So I would like to move to approve the, this permit. And I will need help with the language, please. Mr. Turner, can you put the slide on the screen, please?
Yeah, through the mayor, I think we also have some updates to the resolution that we'd like to kind of share on the screen for the council's benefit to address the changes that Mr. Turner mentioned in his presentation. There's a kind of a couple cleanups that need to be done throughout in terms of the findings. So we'll, we'll kind of walk through those. Or Mr. Turner here, we'll walk through those for the council's benefit before going to the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so to start, I won't read all of the changes. They are fairly extensive. But just to summarize, so the resolution of the city council would be to a resolution of the city Menlo Park denying, denying a city council call-up and modifying the planning commission's approval of the use permit and architectural control permit to construct a new service station, including a fueling pump canopy, convenience store, and drive-through car wash and a use permit for 24-hour operation of the fueling station and limited 24-hour operation of the convenience store, and to remove the approval of the use permit for the concurrent sale of beer and wine between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. in the C2S neighborhood, commercial district, special zoning district. The, the resolution has been updated, if you can scroll down a little bit, documenting the applicant's withdrawal of the use permit request for the beer and wine sales, and then acknowledging that the size of the convenience store would be reduced. There are findings addressing the call-up letter, the call-up letter items. And then the findings for the use permit approval have been updated to remove the approval of the alcohol sales and then the findings associated with, with that. And then the conditions of approval have also been updated to reflect the removal of the alcohol sales and then to allow the flexibility of the convenience store to be modified, reduced in the size as long as it's consistent with the conceptual site plan that is now attached to the resolution as Exhibit G.
So that concludes Mr. Turner's update on the resolution. If we could, City Clerk Erin, go to the slide with the recommended actions from Mr. Turner's presentation quickly. That might just help visually, but effectively, the motion would be to, as Mr. Turner said in the beginning, deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's approval with modifications and the modifications that Mr. Turner laid out in the reso, resolution, excuse me, and the updated conditions of approval. So here's the slide. I'll turn it back to Mr. Turner if there's any clarifying questions.
So is this the appropriate time to move to approve the adopted resolution? So moved. I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Nash and a second by Mayor Taylor to adopt a resolution denying a city council call-up and modifying the planning commission's approval of the use permit and architectural control permit to construct a new service station, including a fueling pump, canopy, convenience store, and drive-through car wash and a use permit for 24-hour operation of the fueling station and limited 24-hour operation of the convenience store, and to remove the approval of the use permit for the concurrent sale of beer and wine between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. in the C2S zoning district of a project located at 1399 Willow Road. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Nash.
Yes.
City council member Dorr.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs recused and city council member Woolison absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erin. And I wanted to correct some information that I shared earlier. The climate action plan is Item H1, which is a regular business item, not a study session. And the urban forest master management plan is Item 6.2 in the climate action plan. And at this time, I would like to reopen public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So yes, we did receive one more card for our Item D, general public comment, for items not on tonight's agenda. And with that, I will be introducing Ray Mueller.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and greetings to you and Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Dorr. My apologies, so many years coming here at 7:00 P.M. I just went by muscle reflex and came at 7:00 P.M. and discovered I missed public comment, so thank you for opening it again for me. I have tried, and to respect my distance from the council since I left it. I come tonight actually as a LAFCO commissioner and as, as a supervisor for those who are seeking annexation into the city in the unincorporated areas. They really have been waiting since 2015 for the city to move on this application. And frankly, just to decide whether the answer is yes or no. And I think so much time has passed. They're really owed that. At the, I will do my best at the county and in LAFCO to go ahead and negotiate in good faith in the city and see if, see, and work with staff to see if we can reach a resolution to that. But I think we really have reached the point now that those residents really deserve an answer. And so that's why I came to you tonight, to just ask if we could please work together to try to reach that end. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so we will be closing public comment on Item D for items not on the agenda, returning it to the mayor to open up our study session, Item E1.
Thank you, City Clerk Erin, and thank you, Commissioner and Supervisor Mueller, for your public comment. The next item on our agenda is Item E, study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in the, in the study session. The city council may provide direction to staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the city council for action. The study session this evening is Item E1, review and provide feedback on the affordable housing on city-owned downtown parking lots feasibility study and guidance on the next steps to implement Housing Element Program H4.G. Here to introduce this item is our principal planner, Tom Smith. If we could press pause for one minute, I just realized we need to recall Vice Mayor Combs back to the dais. We'll take a two-minute recess to give Vice Mayor Drew Combs a chance to make it back to the dais. Thank you.
Okay, having our city council back at our in-person dais, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, and I will pass it over to our planner, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Good evening, city council. I'm joined this evening by Deanna Chow, the Community Development Director. And this evening's study session will provide an overview of the feasibility study for affordable housing on the downtown parking lots and recommended next steps in the process for city council feedback. For some background, the city's Housing Element for the eight-year period from 2023 to 2031 was certified by the state in March of this year. Eight city-owned parking lots are included... Eight city-owned parking lots are included among the 69 sites that are in the Housing Element Site Inventory for potential affordable housing. Housing Element Program H4G prioritizes development of at least 345 very low-income units on the city-owned parking lots. And so for a little bit of context there, one person making nearly $70,000 a year or a family of-
Excuse me, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry to interrupt. If there's extra talking in the in the chambers, it makes it difficult for us to hear. You can always go outside. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. So as I was saying, for some context, one person making nearly $70,000 a year or a family of four with an income of approximately $100,000 a year would qualify as a very low-income household in San Mateo County in 2024. The downtown parking lots are important resources for meeting the city's regional housing needs allocation because the land is already owned by the city, which can reduce costs of development. And the lots are located in a high-resource area near public transit. The Housing Element outlines an ambitious timeline with key milestones, including a feasibility study in 2023, issuing an RFP in 2024, completing entitlements in 2025, and developing at least 345 very low-income units by 2027. The objectives of the feasibility study were to evaluate the physical attributes of each parking lot, to identify any potential constraints such as easements or title issues, to assess zoning considerations and consistency with other plans like the city's specific plan for the downtown area, to determine which lots are most suitable for affordable housing development, and to provide recommendations for next steps in the process. Moving into an overview of the feasibility study, I'll take a few minutes to describe highlights of each parking plaza, focusing on unique aspects. But there is a full description of each lot available within the feasibility study itself. So I'll start with an overall map of the city-owned lots. And this map, you can see El Camino Real runs top to bottom on the right side of the map, and then Santa Cruz Avenue is shown mostly in green, running left to right across the center of the map. The parking plazas are numbered one through eight, and they're shown in sort of a magenta, blue, and yellow colors here, starting in the upper right, what we'll call northeast corner of the map, is Parking Plaza 1. And then moving counterclockwise to the west and then the south and then east, we reach Parking Plaza 8 at the lower right southeast corner of the map. So as a quick overview to orient you, Parking Plazas 1 through 3 are north of Santa Cruz Avenue, and Parking Plazas 4 through 8 are generally south of Santa Cruz Avenue. So I'll give just a general overview of the next several slides. We have each parking plaza shown on a map, which is also included in the feasibility study. General area of the parking, each parking plaza is shown in sort of this reddish rust color that you can see on the screen here. There are some green dots, which are the general locations of trees on the parking plazas. Yellow lines indicate overhead utilities. And then certain maps will have easements that are shown in other colors or patterns. So for instance, for Parking Plaza 1, shown here, you can see over to the right-hand side, sort of halfway up the map are some pink, blue, and purple areas that hopefully show up there. So Parking Plaza 1 is the largest parking lot at 2.28 acres. It does also include Maloney Lane, which runs along the right side of the lot that you can see here on the map. And there are also two pedestrian passages to Oak Grove Avenue and Santa Cruz Avenue that are also part of that parcel. Specific plan identified it as a site for a potential 650-space parking structure. There are utility easements shown in pink, blue, green, running from Santa Cruz Avenue about halfway up Maloney Lane. And then I would mention that for all of the parking plazas in general, we know that there are some water lines and other underground utilities that may cross the sites, but they're not currently mapped. And so we're working with external agencies, and we may also do some survey work to try to identify those exact locations as we move further into this process. But we're showing what we have mapped for now. Parking Plaza 2 is the smallest of the eight lots, but it has strong accessibility. It has frontages on Oak Grove, Chestnut, and Crane Streets. It has a rectangular shape that would make it easier to develop with the building. The one thing that I would point out here is that there's a blue dashed line that runs adjacent to Crane Street, and that shows a five-foot plan line for the widening of Crane Street that was established in 1968. So a development on this site would need to follow that plan line, or it would have to be abandoned as part of a future development. And the specific plan identifies this site for a potential 250-space parking structure and a pocket park. Parking Plaza 3 is the second-largest lot at nearly two acres. And it also has three pedestrian connections to Oak Grove Avenue that run between existing buildings. The specific plan identified it as a potential site for a 650-space parking structure and pocket park. And the pocket park would be located off of Crane Street on that portion of the lot that that sort of sticks out towards that street. Parking Plaza 4, so now we're moving to the south side of Santa Cruz Avenue. Parking Plaza 4 includes a 10-foot public utility easement that's shown in a blue crosshatch which runs behind the buildings facing Santa Cruz Avenue. And there's also an area of the lot that is owned by Drager's Markets, and that's shown, it's a rectangle with the red dashed line around it. We also know that Drager's currently uses other portions of the parking plaza for loading activities associated with their operations from time to time. So these, these potential factors might complicate future development on the site. Parking Plaza 5 is a rectangular one-acre lot. It includes the similar 10-foot public utility easement that's shown in blue crosshatch, and that runs again behind the buildings facing Santa Cruz Avenue, similar to Plaza 4. Parking Plaza 5 also has that 10-foot public utility easement shown in blue crosshatch. A little difference here from Lot 5 is that there's another area shown here in a red dashed line, a sort of square adjacent to Chestnut Street, and that area of the parking plaza is owned by Wells Fargo. So that, that's a factor that could complicate potential redevelopment of this particular plaza. And it is also the location of a weekly farmer's market that's held on Sundays. Parking Plaza 7 is fully city-owned, but it does include CCNRs, at least 13 of the spots in the parking plaza to Trader Joe's, which is adjacent directly to the south here. And the plaza is also included in the city's CIP for some proposed resurfacing work in the near future. And finally, Parking Plaza 8 is a rectangular one-acre lot that is fully city-owned. And I would also note that like Parking Plaza 7, it is included in the city's CIP for resurfacing work. All of the city-owned parking plazas are in the downtown district of the specific plan area. And in the specific plan, there's a base level of development and a bonus level of development. And the bonus level of development can be achieved by including a public benefit with a project. The table that's shown in this slide compares the zoning standards at the base and bonus levels. So at base level, a development is allowed a density of 60 dwelling units per acre, and you could get a height of approximately four to five stories and a floor area ratio of 275%. And then moving up to the bonus level, shown in the far-right column, a development is allowed a density of up to 100 dwelling units per acre, could achieve approximately six to seven stories in height and 375% floor area ratio. Beyond what is included in the city's specific plan zoning, there is state legislation like AB 1763 and AB 2097 that allow additional flexibility for properties within a half-mile of public transit. So in the case of all eight parking plazas, they would fall within a half-mile of the Caltrain Station, and they would be allowed unlimited density, an extra three stories or 33 feet of height. And they would have no minimum parking requirements. So that's some considerations to keep in mind that could go above and beyond what's included in the zoning for these sites. The key findings from the study indicate that Parking Plazas 1, 2, and 3 have the highest redevelopment potential because of a combination of factors like size, accessibility, fewer easements and agreements that could complicate redevelopment of those sites. These three lots could accommodate over 483 units at the bonus level density. So that's not even including the additional flexibility through state legislation and other density bonuses. And so that would well exceed the 345-unit goal in the Housing Element. Use of the city's affordable housing overlay is another method to boost density on those sites. So overall, the study is recommending a phased approach, focusing initially, as I said, on 1, 2, and 3. And then we see plazas 8 and 5 as having potential for future phases of development because those have fewer redevelopment potential issues with them. It's important to note that any redevelopment should balance the city's housing goals and the Housing Element with current downtown parking needs. And so the study recommends including some level of replacement parking as part of any new development to make up for lost public parking spaces on the plazas. And there is a study underway with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to evaluate future parking needs in the downtown. There may be some overlap that would contribute to our future analysis as we move further into this, this project. Moving forward, the city has two primary options for disposition of the selected lots. The city council can declare them as surplus land, which would subject them to the state's Surplus Land Act process. And that includes a 60-day notice period to a list of interested parties that's put together by the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level. And there would also be a 90-day good-faith negotiation with all responding interested parties as part of that process. Or alternately, the city can declare the lots as exempt surplus land under one of two potential exemptions that are allowed for affordable housing. And the staff report calls them exemptions A and B for ease of reference. So quickly, exemption A would be for if you're using 80% of the land for residential uses, and then 40% of the units would have to be constructed at 60% of the area median income or below, and 20% of the units would have to be at 50% of area median income, very low-income level or below. And then exemption B is an open competitive bid process, and that requires 100% affordable units. And of those 100% affordable units, 75% would be restricted to the low-income limit, which is 80% of AMI or below. And 25% of the units would need to be at moderate income, which is 120% of AMI or below. Or you could have a mixed-use development greater than one acre with 300 or more units, and a minimum 20% of those units would have to be offered at the low-income level or below. So exemption B, like the state's surplus land act process, comes with a specific disposition process defined by, by the state that we would need to follow. Exemption A would allow more city control over the development parameters and the elements of the process to select developments for the sites. And so if the city council declares the parking plazas exempt surplus land, then we could move forward. We would need to submit to HCD approval, and that would be required before the city could make a sale or lease of the land for affordable housing. If the city proceeds with the exempt surplus land declaration using exemption A, there are several options for soliciting developer interest. This table is adapted from a more detailed table in the staff report, and it compares different methods, RFI, RFQ, or RFP methods. Each has its own advantages and disadvantages in terms of the timeline, the level of detail that would be included, and the amount of flexibility that it allows. In the case of the downtown parking lots, because there are multiple sites under consideration and various ways that housing and replacement parking and any desire for ancillary commercial uses could be developed across those selected sites, an RFI could be structured to allow developers the flexibility to suggest creative concepts that they think would be viable. So one developer may propose 100% residential structure with very low-income units on one parking plaza. Another would have a dedicated parking structure with some ground-floor commercial uses, and then maybe a mixed-income development on a, on a third parking plaza. And another developer may come up with a completely different concept. But the, the RFI would provide the opportunity for those creative, flexible solutions that we may or may not have considered across multiple sites as long as they meet the basic criteria that we, as a city, establish. In general, an RFQ may be more appropriate for a project where we know the specifics of what we want on each site and are attempting to identify qualified developers to construct that project. So for instance, if we know that we want 228 very low-income units and 249 replacement spaces on a certain site, and we have all of those sort of numbers figured out, we want to pocket park as indicated on the specific plan, those kinds of things, and so forth. We could provide those specifics in an RFQ, and then that would help us determine which developers are qualified to construct a project that meets our requirements that we've set out. The risk of giving a more specific, that list of very specific requirements for each site is that this kind of project may not be feasible, and then we could see fewer responses or potentially the need to modify the request and then solicit interest again. I will say, there can be a lot of similarities between some of these methods where a more structured RFI or a more flexible RFQ could essentially be considered the same thing. I think the important thing is, is just to keep in mind, what are we asking developers to provide us? And then we can structure that process how we like it without getting too caught up in what, what we're actually calling the process that we select, as long as we're all in agreement on those parameters and the details that we want. Based on the study findings and analysis, staff recommends returning to a city council meeting this fall to declare Parking Plazas 1, 2, and 3 as exempt surplus land using the exemption criteria A that I described earlier. Staff proposes issuing a more structured, detailed RFI to gauge developer interest and better understand the current market and ability to create a development with specific parameters like replacement public parking spaces and at least 345 very low-income units across the selected sites. Following the RFI process, staff would return to the city council with the results. And depending on the quality and the number of responses received, we would then propose recommendations for next steps in the disposition process for council's consideration. So we welcome city council's feedback on that proposed approach this evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your presentation. And at this time, I'll take clarifying questions from city council members before we go to public comment.
Yes, a quick clarification question. You mentioned the two different exemption types, and one is 80% residential, the other is 100% affordable housing. Those are just the two kinds of requirements, or the two kind of exemptions that are legally written out as the two options. But that is not saying that what the city chooses to do with the land in the RF-whatever process has to just be that. There would be additional requirements or parameters that the city could choose to add on top of that?
Right. We would need to meet the requirements of the exemption, but then we can layer our own additional interests on top of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Holmes.
Thank you. And so the the city pursuing this process, does it in any way impact the repaving schedule a- as it relates to um those parking lots or parking plazas that are scheduled to be repaved?
If we get council feedback on the selected parking lots for for an RFI, RFQ, whatever we want to call it, and it's parking plazas one, two, and three as staff recommended, then we would feel comfortable moving forward with the resurfacing as planned for those lots. If council indicated an interest in one of those lots for for redevelopment, then then we would need to reconsider, obviously.
Wait, could could you um, I just don't under- under-
Could you clarify which of the parking lots are going to be repaved?
Yeah, supposed to. Sorry, the CIP includes parking plazas seven and eight in CIP.
The other side of Santa Cruz.
Yes.
So the the lots that staff is recommending be identified are not uh parking plazas that are currently scheduled for repaving.
That's correct.
All right. And as part of this process, staff at this moment doesn't intend to make any recommendations about the repaving separate from what has already been said about the repaving.
Right, yes.
Thanks.
Well, I'm curious if you have on hand what the AMI is currently. I know that we're not getting necessarily into the the details, but having that in mind would just be useful. It's okay if it would take a second, thanks.
I I have it pulled up on a tab in my browser that I can access. Do you want it pulled up on the screen or? Okay. Area median income in twenty twenty-four.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith. Actually, I think it'll be helpful to put it on the screen so we all can see it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your patience while we pull that up. The area median income for a household of four in twenty twenty-four in San Mateo County is one hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars.
Could you advise us where to look for that number?
If you look at the top table on this list, it's, there's like a, I guess it's a yellowish, greenish color as I'm seeing it. Um, there's a line that says prepared five fourteen twenty twenty-four. Had established area median income. One hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars based on household of four.
And so that's in the second table. Uh, income category. Family size for for hundred percent median income. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for putting that on the screen. And if there are no more clarifying questions from city council members, I'll ask the city clerk to take public comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our study session item E one, review and provide feedback on the affordable housing on city-owned downtown parking lots, feasibility study, and guidance on the next steps to implement housing element program H four dot G. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a land-linarity cellphone, please press star nine now. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back team and return to me at the clerk's desk. We currently have nine speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment on our study session item E one. Okay, we are up to twelve speakers, so I'm going to give just one final call for public comment. Please get uh raise your hands for item E one or submit a speaker card for item E one. All right, so we have twelve speakers. With that, we will be doing a speaker time of two minutes per speaker. Our first speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Anna Chow.
I'm Jenny Michelle. Personal comments. Unlike the previous housing elements that cater to constituents that are not like me, this housing element is where we GSD, get stuff done for marginalized residents like me, finally. This summer, I toured our sun via public transit to neighboring municipalities. Last week, it was Sunnyvale taking our inaugural electric train ride. Yes, dude. One could argue the day backfired because it ended in big tears that did not seem to end. The cause? Because he wanted to move to Sunnyvale. Wait, what? This is despite his years of passionate love towards Menlo Park. What happened? Exiting the train, you're welcomed immediately into the area by a plaza, mixed-use areas, busty bow, witnessing every type of humanity, kids, dogs, elderly, workers from every sector, business meeting, tourists, disabled like us. The list goes on. We call this vibrancy, where living and commerce collide into smiles. What sealed the deal? The ten-over ones. And they're not even fully activated. The vibrancy is about to take off. The ability to work, live, play in completely different spaces located within a few blocks. Dude, yes. All your needs met without the vehicle dependency model. Vet, medical, pharmacy, clothing salon, golf, grocery, childcare dining, movies, fire station, parks. I told him, well, okay, when you come of age, you can live in Sunnyvale on your own. He accepted this offer and the tears morphed into a twinkle. But then it hit me. By our inaction or lack of GSD for decades, we've placed ourselves behind the ball, losing a competitive advantage against other forward-thinking cities and counties. Let's not squander our remaining advantages. Let's embrace the vision to provide for our kids and next generations with ten-over ones, promenades, stabilizing retail, parking garages, and smiles to create a super hot Menlo. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next speaker is Anna Chow, followed by Ruby O.
Hello, City Council, Mayor Taylor. Um, I'm Anna Chow. My husband and I own Cheeky Monkey Toys Downtown. We're also residents of Menlo Park. Um, and this project has a direct impact on our business. Um, and I want to make sure that as you're going forward and looking at the different options, the vibrancy of your local businesses downtown is at the forefront of of your 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 thought process. Parking is a huge uh draw for shoppers. We need to make sure that we have parking that's available for our customers and our employees. Um, we also have operations that happen in parking plaza one. We have forty-foot trucks that come through um, making deliveries of toys. We need to get our Legos. Um, so we need to make sure we have a safe loading zone behind the store um, as well as trash receptacles, places for recology to come. So all of that needs to be taken into consideration. Um, and we really want to be a partner in this project. We want to make sure that the business community is involved um, and that we have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Ruby O, followed by Adina Levin.
Good evening. My name is Ruby, pronoun she/her. I'm an eleven, soon-to-be twelve-year-old. I was here about a year ago regarding the noise that the new pool heaters would have made at the Bellhaven Community Center. I am here because I strongly believe that everyone should have a home. Although I am realistic enough to know that that's not going to happen tomorrow or between now and the next few years. However, if we always think this way, change won't happen and nothing's ever going to get done. So we have to start somewhere. And I think adding more homes in downtown Menlo Park is a great start. I don't mean adding houses that are worth millions and millions of dollars. I mean adding houses that are more affordable for everyone. I honestly don't even know why there's a question. Why wouldn't we want more houses in downtown Menlo Park? It'll lift so many people out of homelessness and poverty. I am one of the many people who hate seeing that homeless people have to live on the streets and on the side of the road. And I know for a fact that I'm not the only person in this room who feels this way. Thank you, Mayor Taylor, council members, and members of the public. Also, if you haven't been to the Bellhaven Pool, you should go because it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Ernesto Reyes.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, City Council members. Adina Levin, um, speaking to the uh letters from uh Menlo Together and our uh partners, the Housing Leadership Council, and for myself, as a Menlo Park resident, I'm living near downtown. It is just very exciting to see the city working on taking those next steps toward providing uh a housing in our downtown area, especially using city-owned land that really enables um a deeply affordable housing in a more uh financially feasible manner. I wanted to support the recommendation to prioritize lots one, two, and three. Um, it's great that this allows affirmatively furthering fair housing as we decided in the housing element to have housing in the um more uh central and and other areas of of Menlo Park. Um, it's great to have housing near where many of our people who work downtown can live here. Uh, would like to encourage the um uh, whatever the the RF acronyms are, um, doing something at the um RF Q a little looser or RFI a little tighter because I think we do or would recommend that we do have a pretty tight priority on providing affordable housing and in particular, a deeply affordable housing utilizing the bonuses of from the city and from the state to have more affordable housing. Um, would really want to encourage the timing of this to go very much in tandem with the parking uh study so that we study the options for parking, for parking management. And in order to provide convenient and sustainable access to our downtown, we should consider examples like our neighbors in Palo Alto who set up a transportation management association that allows over two hundred and fifty low-income service workers to get to work without driving in a car, and that allowed them to defer a parking garage. So we should be providing as much parking as we need, but not more than that, and using the parking that we have, managing it well. Um, and I am out of time, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Ernesto Reyes, followed by Pam Jones.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Ernesto Reyes and I'm a um architectural designer. I just, I have a a few comments. Uh, I I believe that uh at this point, we don't have the infrastructure such as transportation, electrical services. We need to have this first prior any planning construction. Uh, we need to think about the number of people that we're going to have in the city taking consideration that this is the only project that is is proposing. We have uh where we had the um uh, the the geotechnical uh areas that we're going to have another uh housing proposing. On Sunset Magazine, we are another planning for for housing as well. So the second is the city shall consider to purchase or have the owners of the existing old buildings adjacent to the parking lot to become part of the embellishment of the downtown by providing a well-thought urban planning and no rush to create more more people heights. The financial and economic system we have at this moment is about to change. We should wait for possible changes in our country and for what we are living right now prior to do any hard decision. And the other one, last one, I don't, I don't feel comfortable having, we should remove the low-income housing. This is uh uh derogatory. And in the same, in the in the way is discriminatory. Why? Does this, when you are in that consideration, when they are in those housing, these people, they are not allowed personnel growing by earning the minimum salaries. Otherwise, you lose the right to live in the provinces. And please do not use the teachers, nurses, fire department, police, the police officers as an excuse for low income. Let's wait for the financial system that is about to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Pam Jones, followed by Jeff Schmidt.
Uh, Pam Jones, and as I said, I belong to a number of organizations, but I'm only speaking for myself. Um, I'm really excited about this coming to the council so quickly since we approved the um housing element. And I think it's a very positive sign that we are truly going to be able to meet our goal and that we will, in fact, um have an inclusive city. Um, I think it is important to consider the number of residents that, new residents that will potentially be there. Um, and look to make sure that we really do have enough resources, which I'm pretty sure we do, but we should always pay attention to that. I'd like to see that we um uh do the uh look at the development of the parking structures, because I think there should be parking structures. And uh we should have maximum bonus level height of the apartments, but all of that should be done at one time so that we see how that it fits together. Then we can call for um uh the RF, I don't know, the RFQ, one of those, one of the two that that would, because undoubtedly, they would have the um the ideas of how best to fit things in so that um we would have kind of an automatic um circulation system. It wouldn't have to be real complicated because of the way the structures are. Um, really don't, we don't have to have that same level of planning. Uh, but again, I want to thank the staff um and for bringing this to the council so quickly. And um, and I, and I'm for one, not really concerned about Willow and and Middlefield. Just to say, you know, um, since I hear people talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Jeff Schmidt, followed by Bee Nag.
All right, um, always hard to follow Pam. Um, hello, City Council. My name's Jeff Schmidt. Uh, I play a number of roles in the city, but uh I'm here as a private resident. Uh, really wanted to focus on two topics, one of which we talked about a little bit. Which is the RFQ, RFI discussion. Um, the hope is that this is a, an example of a project that really intersects housing, transportation, and climate. And so I think the level of urgency and speed with which we need to continue to move is really important. So I would encourage accelerating the process through uh an RFQ and really looking at um the ways to continue to move forward with the housing piece of this um versus the creative solutions and spending more years brainstorming and not turning it into a nine- or ten-year project just in the creative phase. So that's one element that I would say. And also uh to argue in favor of that, we know the affordable developer community pretty well. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time um opening this up to a huge aperture of uh developers and ideas and things like that. The second point that I wanted to bring up uh is really around the community benefit. And one thing to potentially think about is um, how do we keep development costs lower? This is affordable housing, so considering things that are like drive-less features, um, bike passes um or things that lower the cost burden for the eventual residents. So um as we get creative, it's really about living downtown and driving less and just keeping that in mind as we have those discussions. Uh, another affordable development um benefit to consider is common spaces for residents that are also open to the public. I think some of those have been done before as well. So um, thank you for the time and um hopefully we can move forward quickly on this.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Bee Nag, followed by iPad Six. So B. Nag, you should be able to engage your microphone. Okay, I am going to return to user B. Nag online. And I'm going to go to iPad Six. And at this time, you should be able to engage your microphone. Okay, for iPad Six user, I will return to you. I'm going to move next to Randy Avalos.
Good evening. Thank you, City Council. So just selling public land to private developers should not be taken lightly. You know, that's, it's good to be thinking that 10-year time horizon for housing, but also it's 150-year time horizon for public lands. Public land at its core provides diverse benefits. Private land is very concentrated benefits. So that's your trade-off. You still have to have accessibility infrastructure to serve those residents and facilities, but less of space. So there's higher costs in maintenance to do that, so it's not a free lunch. There are significant long-term trade-offs. And those diverse benefits of public land, they're easy to let go, they're really hard to get back. So once that land's gone to private, it's really hard to get it back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, I'm going to return to B. Nag. You should be able to engage your microphone at this time. Okay, still not able to hear the user B. Nag, and that's B as in boy, N-A-E-G.
Yeah, it's Bruce Nagel. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, now we can, Bruce. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to this body. I'm a member of a number of sustainability groups that deal in Menlo Park is one of the things. And there's three things that have come to me as I've listened to this. First is, I know that we're all concerned about environment, but I didn't hear very much in regards to any of these specifics that we're going to do something that would address that. The closest that I heard about it was, you know, talking about possibly having dense shopping and then, you know, looking at, do we do something in regards to putting out more mass transit so that we get people out of cars and into buses? And do we develop things to address that? So, you know, I think that's something to consider and there should be some consideration of something that says, here's what we're doing for sustainability. Here's how we're addressing the state requirements that have come out. Here's how we're going to, when this building is finished, it's going to sit proudly in the rest of the buildings that have been constructed for the ability to be sustainable. So we do need to think about that as a, as an issue. And last thing is, is that one of the things that we've been looking at in groups is doing something to make EV charging within multifamily housing and the parking lots for that. And there's some special things that need to be done for that. But that should be one of the considerations because the fact that, you know, if we really want to get people to be as independent as possible, we need to make sure that the, everybody has the opportunity, if they can, to get a vehicle that's electric and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, going to return to our iPad user and then Karen Grove. So our iPad user, you should be able to unmute your end at this time. Okay. So for iPad Six, that is the username. I will return to you after Karen Grove.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am, and I, I, I'm calling in and supported the letter that Menlo Together submitted. And I just want to add that I'm so excited to see this coming into, into focus. And I just, huge thanks for getting us to this point. And everything, it's, it's great. I'm, I'm really excited about everything that I read. I want to urge us to, the only thing I didn't read that I'd like to see is that any RFX will be clear that we are encouraging developers to take advantage of the Affordable Housing Overlay in Menlo Park and the state housing laws to achieve what we want, which I would love to see it very clearly stated that we would like as many affordable homes as is, as can fit and as high affordability level as is possible. And I know, and I really appreciate that we are targeting very low income. That is very, very necessary and public land is the best tool to, kind of the only tool to, well, the very best tool to achieve it. I'd love for us to also call out extremely low-income homes because that is a really important distinction. It requires different kind of financing. And so I hope that any RFX includes the clear encouragement to use state housing while in the Affordable Housing Overlay and to to achieve extremely low-income affordability with some of the units. And then I wanted to say, whatever we call it, I think it would be really awesome to and very helpful to do a process where we select a development partner who is also a design partner, who will help us do our community outreach and hone in on our exact requirements and co-develop the plan and the design. And I'm sorry, I'm on my phone. I see I'm out of time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, so I've had two hands lower. But if iPad Six or M. Jackson wishes to provide a comment, please do re-engage that raised hand feature. Give a couple more seconds for you to do that. Okay, well, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you for everyone that provided a public comment, especially our youngest, Ms. Ruby. I appreciate everything that was shared. And bringing it back to the dais and seeing if there are any additional questions for staff at this time.
Councilmember Nash, thank you. Could you explain putting this, calling out the land as surplus land? What does that mean as far as are we then leasing the land or actually giving it to a developer? Or is that part of the RFX process?
So the surplus land designation applies to either the sale of the land or a lease for 15 or more years. And so those would be the options available. And I'm looking to the city attorney to correct me if there's any thing she would add to that.
Yeah, let me know if you have more questions. We also have Mary Wagner, who's available to answer questions. If you want like a broader overview of how the Surplus Lands Act works, we can provide that.
So will the decision be part of, when we look at, yeah, well, yes, please.
I'll, I'll start and then Mary Wagner can jump in if I'm missing anything. So the, the city has to follow a surplus land, has to adhere to the Surplus Lands Act in order to, which would require the city to designate the property as surplus or exempt surplus property. Once the city goes through either of those two paths that Mr. Smith outlined in the presentation, the city is free to dispose of the land in the manner it chooses unless the city has declared it exempt for one of the affordable housing exemptions, in which case we would then have to de-restrict the property according to that particular exemption category, so 100% affordable or 80% affordable. But if we determine that the, that the land is surplus as opposed to exempt surplus, we have to issue a notice of availability, seek interested developers, but the city is not bound to sell or disp, or lease or dispose of the prop, that the property to any of those developers. Mary, please jump in if I've missed anything.
No, I think that's great and it's great to be here, Mayor, members of the council on the implementation of your adopted and certified housing element. It's fun to see these programs moving forward now. I think both the city attorney and Mr. Smith correctly, you know, described obviously the Surplus Lands Act process. One distinction for either a declaration of exempt surplus or surplus, the first thing the city finds is that the property is no longer necessary for its use and then makes the determination of whether to go through the surplus process as the city attorney described, including the notice of availability. You do have an obligation to negotiate in good faith with anyone who responds to that notice of availability for the development of housing. And there are priorities in, if you receive multiple letters of interest for the property on how you proceed through that. The exempt surplus would give you a little more direct control over the other pieces of the project that the city may be interested in pursuing.
This is Councilmember Holmes, so just following up. There is a path of no return, right? There, there's a moment at which the city doesn't go back or at least another party like might have some claim against the city if it didn't see this process through. And so for me, I think it's understanding specifically when we trigger that path of no return. Is it the RF process, like right, whichever one is chosen? And then you sort of then like, to your point, you said the city has an obligation to negotiating in good faith to anyone who responds. Or is it like sort of? Yeah, so that's where I'm understanding is, is that moment at which it's sort of a path of no return. And then my question would be that like, so you go through this process and maybe no one responds, then like what's the status of the property? Like, does the city have to do something to reverse? If like, if at that moment in time, like right, no developers are interested? Or does it just sort of stay in that, in that state as being designated surplus?
So with respect to the determination that property is surplus versus exempt surplus, if the city were to issue a notice avail, of availability of that surplus property and you didn't receive any interest from the housing development community, there's a list maintained by HCD of the entities that you have to send that notice of availability to. If you don't receive any interest, the city that can then dispose of the property for other purposes. So for example, if you issued a, if you declared a property surplus and you received no letters of interest from housing developers, the city could then pursue other development opportunities with that property. The city could also determine not to do anything with it and potentially undo a determination of surplus and say, well, we do need it. Now we're going to utilize it for XYZ. With respect to the exempt surplus, again, you have a little bit more flexibility on choosing the parameters of the program. And the point of no return really isn't reached, I don't believe, until you've entered into an agreement with someone. Issuing an RFP doesn't bind you. But once you started down that path, I think that there are off-ramps, if you will. And we can certainly return to you with more information on that once you've given the direction tonight on the avenues that you'd like to pursue.
Yeah, I, I, sorry, I just want to reinforce that the, there's no, the, the only point of no return is when the property is actually disposed of, meaning like a lease, a ground lease is executed or a purchase-sale agreement, an escrow closes and is finalized. The path we take will, you know, likely influence what, what the path, what the point of no return is. But truly, the city can undo everything if we structure the deal that way until the point at which the deal closes.
Just sort of fall, just making sure I understand, because the assistant city attorney mentioned that like, if we go the surplus, not the exempt surplus, surplus, right? There is, there becomes this like obligation for a good-faith negotiation. And so again, like that's not, that might not be a moment of no return, but then that might be a moment of where we have where if the city's actions after that point don't align with how another stakeholder might think they should, they may have a claim against us. And I don't know what like would be the remedy of that claim. Maybe it is specific performance, so maybe we wouldn't then have to. But it seems like there, there's, and this is, we don't have to go down this rabbit hole because I know this is like very specific and we'll, we'll work it all out as we go down there. But that is something to give some direction of what I'm thinking of, what becomes the moment of which we're, we're sort of locked into this path and this isn't something that the city has done before.
Councilmember Nash? And so part of the, part of the guidelines that we will provide is that we want the housing, we want the parking, we want loading for our shops. Is that, all of that is within the surplus, exempt surplus land, all of that is permissible to actually specify that. And then it's up to the respondents to say how they would work with that. And then we choose which ones we want to talk with and finesse that further. Or can you please explain?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's an accurate description. With the only caveat, which I'm sure you all have in your mind, is that we still, as the city attorney mentioned, have to be meeting the criteria of the exemption that whatever exemption we're utilizing, however much housing is being provided, fits within the other parameters that the city wants to see with the development of that project. And of course, you know, meeting the goals of your housing element is also a very important factor in this discussion.
And that wouldn't come through during exemption. The exemption just has these things lined out. That would be in the RF whatever process that we choose, that we would add those other specifications.
Correct.
Yeah, and then if, if the property is declared exempt and then ultimately disposed of, leased, or so, if the property is declared exempt and ultimately sold or leased, then the property has to be de-restricted to ensure that it complies with the bases for the original exemption.
I feel generally comfortable with the proposal that staff have laid out for which exemption process to go through. That one offers a lot of, more flexibility for the city. I suppose the place where I have more questions and opinions is as we get into the RF whatever and what stage we want that to be in. It was helpful for me to look at some RFQs that have been issued to do a city-owned land turning into affordable housing. And it was, I was looking at Kikuk Crossing in San Mateo, Bay Meadows in San Mateo, and 555 Kelly in Half Moon Bay. And particularly Bay Meadows, it was helpful to look at what they had in the RFQ and the project objectives that they outlined there. And something that I'm not quite understanding is when I look at their, their project objectives, they're talking at fairly high levels here of, they're saying, we want this to be transient or transit-oriented family housing developments. We want to utilize state density bonus to maximize the number of units. Target the units to be affordable to households whose income does not exceed 50% of the area media, median income. It's good, so some of their more general, that's like the most specific one here. They're not They're not saying the number of units, it's not saying the number of stories, involve the community during design and include businesses in that. And so this seems accurately high enough level to allow some input, while also it seems like from this process for Bay Meadows, they were able to get different RFQs, the request for qualifications. And then from there, review them, do some interviews, and then move forward with just one or two options and then narrow it quite quickly. And what I I am concerned about in the way the staff report is outlined of doing an RFI process and then moving to an RFP, I worry about this timeline extending and extending, extending longer than it needs to be. And so so my curiosity is for what is being proposed of RF RF land? What can we do to offer a list of project objectives? Obviously, the council has to come to that, but a list that's structured like like what's in Bay Meadows, for example, and move forward from there rather than a very, very open-ended RFI. And so that that's a question and also a consideration I'm trying to work out here.
Yeah, I think in the feasibility study, so there are a few objectives that we know we need to hit based on what we've put in program H4G of the housing element. So that's minimum 345 units affordable at the very low income level. And then in the feasibility study, it indicates some level of replacement parking, which hopefully as part of our study of downtown parking, we can get a decent number that we can offer for inclusion of parking for replacement parking. And then there are some other considerations in the feasibility study. So for instance, some of those specific plan recommendations, I think Parking Plaza 2 and 3 incorporate some pocket parks that were envisioned. And so evaluating whether we want to encourage developers to submit a response that incorporates those kinds of aspects with some public open space, something like that. And then I think those are kind of the the basic parameters that that staff has envisioned at this time. And then obviously, if there are other specifics that that council is interested in, we could certainly layer those on top. But I think the I the idea or the the recommendation is really to allow, within those parameters, the flexibility to accommodate it across the three sites. So for instance, we're not saying this many units on this particular site, this much parking on this particular site, but how can you do it across across all three?
And so that all makes sense. But I then why, why do we, why, why is it being suggested to do an RFI as opposed to an RFQ if that sounds pretty aligned with what I'm reading from a Bay Meadows RFQ?
Yeah, I I think it's, I think if we want to call it an RFQ, we can, we can pursue an RFQ. I think we're speaking the same language, whether we're talking about the more, the more detailed RFI, if you want to call it that, or the more open-ended RFQ. Based on the information, I think staff's recommendation is to get the responses back from that, that let's just call it an RFQ. So once we get those back, then we would return to city council and say, here's, here's the responses we got. Are you comfortable with the level of detail and and sort of the the concept that's been proposed? Are you confident enough to move forward with a particular developer who's proposed this or that? And then at that time, we could evaluate, city council could evaluate whether or not to proceed to negotiation with a developer. Or you may determine, based on the quality or number of proposals, actually, we want to see some more specifics from developers and then compare those amongst each other as part of an RFP process. So we're leaving this, we're proposing to leave the steps a little bit more open-ended after this, just to see what we get back, since this is the first time that we've pursued this type of disposition process.
Thanks for that explanation. That's really helpful. And have staff had a chance to talk to cities like San Mateo or Half Moon Bay about their processes to to also glean from the knowledge, the collective knowledge of the county?
We've done the research of looking at the different RFQs, RFIs that are out there. We've not spoken specifically with staff from those other jurisdictions, but that is some outreach that we could do to follow up for their kind of best practices from their experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Ms. Chow. Just to follow up on the public space and the idea of pocket park, because something I'm concerned about is we're going to build on the majority of the land and there really isn't any public space available. So what, I don't know what size pocket park you're thinking of, just trying to think about what is going to be accessible for the residents in this hopefully downtown space.
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor. So the specific plan process actually envisioned a couple of those pocket parks that I mentioned. And one would be on the eastern side of Parking Plaza 2. I'd have to go back and look, I don't know the specific size in terms of land area that's proposed, but it would be adjacent to Chestnut Street as part of Parking Plaza 2. And it's a fairly small area. I think the feasibility study might show a little bit of a conceptual area there. But it would run across, run sort of north to south across that entire Chestnut Street frontage. And then Parking Plaza 3, because of its unique shape, it does have an area that kind of sticks out and connects to Crane Street. And so the idea there, the specific plan envisioned 650 space parking structure that would take up the majority of that area. But then there would be sort of this extension off of it that seemed ideal to make into a pocket park. And that's a considerably larger space than the pocket park that was envisioned for Parking Plaza 3, and it would be easily accessible from Crane Street. And so those are the two, I believe those were the only two that are mentioned in the in the specific plan that were envisioned.
Thank you. I I know that this is not the time for funding discussion, but when you come back, is that when we will? Or is that further down the line?
I I think as part of the the process, RFQ, RFI, we would want to understand the financial capacity and sort of the funding resources that a developer would propose to utilize as part of making that that vision happen. So we'd be looking for some of that feedback from the development community.
Thank you. And then my other, well, I'll make a statement about the about parking. I I believe that forcing folks to have behavior changes because we don't, we want to discourage parking spaces. We'd rather have folks walking and biking. For some folks, that just isn't a reality. So I'm not interested in getting rid of a lot of parking. I'm I'm interested in it's to provide, and I'll say this as an example of a recently completed affordable housing project. Not enough parking was provided, and it's causing a negative impact. And so that's the last thing I would like to see in this. I also appreciate the comments that were made by a current business owner about what, how we can incorporate the business business community's perspective and lens about how we want to see the downtown, where we are incorporating something that's more comprehensive. So, and I think of, but it's not pieced together. It's something that's comprehensive. I don't know, the idea to buy some of the neighboring buildings so that there was a, it was a larger project that could create a better plaza downtown along with having housing with parking available, where we are not taking away any of the existing parking, but we are building a structure and housing with it together. And and those are my initial thoughts.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I do. And again, I appreciate this is early in the process, but but obviously, any developer likely not have money on hand and look for some sort of financing vehicles options. Do we know, like, if for those types of of financing vehicles that these developers look to, whether there'll be any restrictions if the city went with like something like a long-term lease on the land versus actually like sort of a fee simple transaction? So that'd be my first question. I am sensitive to, yeah, once a transition is made from public land to private land, like, in most cases, never becomes public again. And, you know, Menlo Park will exist for a very long time. And so I think it's important for us to look on the horizon, for our time horizon to be like, you know, extensive and as stewards for for this, this entity for this period. And so, but then again, like, if the markets don't allow for those types of transactions, then maybe it's it's just, it's it's, you know, sort of magical thinking for me to say, hey, could we do like a 50-year lease? So then I know that at some point, that land will return to the city. I won't be around, but at some point, you know, it'll return to the city.
So we could do a little bit more research into that to bring back. But I would say, based on what we've seen from RFQs and RFIs by other cities, they tend to to do the leasing route. And so when they, when they're getting responses from developers, it seems like it's a viable path to to use that method.
And then one additional follow-up question, what you guys have proposed, or what staff has proposed looks at Plaza 1, 2, and 3. And and again, going back to my thinking, this is the first time the city has done something like that, this. And we are talking about a transition from a public to private. Was there any thinking or consideration around sort of just doing one lot, whether Plaza 1 or whether doing some combination of 1 and 2, or 1 and 3, or 2 and 3? I think, which is the one that fronts Oak Grove, I think, or both 2 and 3, I think, right? Front Oak Grove. It would, and I know that there are certain housing unit numbers we're in theory trying to hit, but for me, I see the 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 three lots and or three plazas, it seems like a very large project. And and I would like to phase it a little bit more than you guys are phasing it. And so that's how I'm I'm looking at it.
The way that staff envisioned releasing the solicitation process would leave it open to developers to utilize any or all of those lots. And so some developer may come back and say, I I really only need 1 and 2, and 3 could be a later phase. I think that's part of trying to gauge the market interest and, yeah, move forward that way.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that answer.
I would like to actually follow up just on the AMI because I I'm interested in 50% AMI or less. And is that, is that a discussion now? Or is that something more around policy and BMR or?
I think depending on the nature of the the questions. I mean, we can, I think we can try to answer some of those questions. Yeah.
Well, I actually don't have a question. Well, my question is, how do we get projects that are for 50% AMI or less as opposed to the 80% AMI? The $186,000 a year isn't realistic to the families that need homes. It's much less.
So the the income level that we're we're stating as part of the Housing Element Program, H4G, is very low income. Those 345 units, that is 50% of AMI is the very low income level. So that would be one of the key metrics that we would be including in the RFQ.
And is the limit 50% or is it 50% and less?
50 to 80%.
And so how do we get to the 25% to 50%?
So I think extremely low income level would be 30 to 50%. If we wanted to increase the affordability of the units, we could go below what's included in the Housing Element Program.
I appreciate that suggestion, and that was one thing I was thinking of as we talk about the RF whatever, what kind of objectives, project objectives we would want to see and include and have come back to us for further conversation. And so I I really appreciate that, Mayor Taylor, of of looking at encouraging 30 to 50% AMI, especially given that, you know, if if city staff, either maintenance workers, there was an application out and it's, they they make 44 to 60,000, or our childcare workers make even less, they make in the early $40,000. And so wanting to make sure that, you know, even our city staff can afford to live here is a big priority for me. Another objective that I'd love to see is a developer who has experience with community outreach, because this process will require a lot of input from the community and from the businesses who are downtown. And so that's another objective I would want to make sure is is highlighted here as we explore the things. One thing about the term for RF whatever that I do like about the RFQ, it's it's qualification, and it seems to be asking for the qualifications for different developers so we understand their experience, their background. Do they know how to do community outreach? Do they have, they built all deeply affordable housing in beautiful ways in downtown, things like that? And so I would hope that in whatever RF process we choose, that it is still requiring that qualification so we understand, and so staff understands who the developers are that are approaching the city.
Vice Mayor Combs, Councilwoman Menash. So one of the things that I had been contemplating is that we would do, start with a smaller project rather than somewhat as Vice Mayor Combs was saying, perhaps not do all three, but try and really get something going where we are seeing what we can build and trying to, perhaps not trying to go necessarily to the lowest levels that we want, I think is very important to do. But I would like to see us do a project, get it done, get it done quickly, have a nice project that we can then look at, but not get too bogged down in too many of the details so that we don't get off the ground. So I guess I also see the benefit of having a more comprehensive plan. So I'm looking to staff, I guess, in future conversations as to how to balance that. So we really do get something sooner rather than later. And then also, I didn't see, in the descriptions of the parking plazas, there is definitely a description of how parking plazas are currently used for the back-of-the-house functions for businesses. How do you envision that being able to be accommodated?
So there is a, within the downtown district, any on-sites that are directly adjacent to the back of another building, there is a 25-foot setback required so that that would leave enough room for vehicles to make deliveries to to have some of those back-of-house functions continue. And so that would, that would need to be considered as part of a proposal and that we would include some of the zoning specifics for a developer to consider.
Thank you. And then, given our city's climate action plan and all, definitely would want this to be 100% electric, all-electric building and as sustainable as possible given the affordable development nature of it. I guess one other piece is I have been assuming that there is state funding out, well, state, federal, local, that there will be funding out there as a 100% affordable project, that the city may have to come up with some matching funds, some sort of money. But if, do you have, can you give any sort of overview? Or is this too early to get any clue as to how this will happen?
I think we would look to see what kind of responses we get from the the financials of of an interested developer. And then from there, we could evaluate a little bit more in terms of what the city contributions would, would be.
Okay, so I always just really hook them on that front. And I think Councilmember Nash and I are aligned with the idea of let's get something like, right? And, and like a large, comprehensive project seems more challenging, I think, in the same way as we're looking at like income levels. Again, I'm supportive of going as low as, as low as we can. I know on the other end of that, like the developers have to get financing and part of that will be dependent on like the income levels that they're targeting. And I know some are easier than others. And so, but I would just like to say, I always said envision this, these projects as the city's contribution with the land. Because what you hear time and time again from developers, specifically affordable housing developers in this area is that land acquisition is so costly here. And that is the barrier to entry. And so in this case, you're getting the land for free. And so like, for me, and again, I've not looked in detail at some of these other projects in other cities, but I would be hesitant, or somewhat skeptical if then after getting the land for free, a developer came back and said, hey, you know, Menlo Park can kick in 10 million here, that that'd really be nice.
One clarification on income levels, 30 to 50% is very low income, not extremely low income. Could you please confirm that? And because I wanted to check, because what was told to us is that 30 to 50% is extremely low income. And I want to make sure that we are right in understanding what we've put forth in our housing elements with this site. And if Assistant Attorney Wagner could contribute, would welcome input there.
So if I understood the question correctly, very low income is 30 to 50% of AMI. Lower income is 50 to 80%. And then moderate is 80 to 120. And I'm looking at very low for you, extremely low.
Extremely, okay. And so in our, in our projection for the site in our housing element, we said it would be very low income, which is the 30 to 50?
Extremely low is 15 to 30. And then we said in our housing element that these units would be, I believe they were very low.
Very low income, yeah, 30 to 50.
So it would be 30 to 50%. Okay, great. I'm glad that we've already done the hard work then, Council, of saying that that would be a priority here. I, I am hopeful that we can keep some flexibility and in offering developers a choice of, okay, you have a few options. How, how would you want to do this? Develop across those sites? And so I think it'd be important to keep flexibility there because we did say, it seems like Council is saying, making sure there's room for parking is important, for example. And I, I don't think we can do all that just on a singular, like parking lot one, right? That we need there to be flexibility and use across the different parking lots. And I'd like to see what comes back to us from developers of looking at one, two, three of those parking lots to see together what could become in a more holistic, comprehensive and thoughtful way, rather than overly restricting what is available from the start and thus limiting the kind of options and proposals that we get.
So what I was thinking is that we would really hone in on the housing first. And if needed, maybe we can do it all, do the comprehensive. But I'm most interested right now in seeing housing. We definitely need to figure out how to keep the parking in play while we're doing this first development of housing. But if, if we can do it all, great. But if we can only do one thing at first, just to get it off the ground. I was thinking have maybe one parking lot be housing. And then we would have the other two parking lots be following very soon thereafter. But at least we prove that we can do it. We would see what we would be able to do. And then we could learn from that to go further the next time. Basically, I do think we need to use all the parking lots. I do think, I do think we definitely need the parking. But I also don't want to complicate it too much. I want to get something moving.
I think we both have the goal of uncomplicating things, but we're leaning through that to different directions of where we should go. And that's why I wonder.
That's why we have staff.
So if I could add, like I think I am Councilmember, like open to what staff is proposing, which is allowing the option if someone wants to look at and propose something on all three lots. Or plazas. But again, I think, like I would prefer something more phased. But I think this is where I'm sort of disagree with both of you in that. I think on each plaza, it is the obligation of that development to solve the parking for retail that exists currently at that plaza. So I don't think from my perspective that the solve here is going to be some singular concentrated parking because again, if we're going back to the Cheeky Monkey example, if that's all housing and there's no like retail parking, and what we're going to say is that we're gonna, we're gonna use the parking, like, I don't know, down by, you know, Menlo Church or in that last plaza, then those people aren't going to walk to Cheeky Monkey, I can promise you that. I agree. Cheeky Monkey is going to see its business go down, full stop. Because you're not going to have the as accessible parking. So what I see the parking solve here is not like some concentrated parking lot or structure, but is that each of those plazas will still have to retain some, I'm not saying it's 100% or one for one, but certainly some retail parking that will serve the businesses that, that, that front Santa Cruz.
And just to add to that, there, there needs to be residential parking, customer parking and employee parking.
And I'm, I want to make sure that we're also remembering there's the other side of, there is Santa Cruz Road where there's also parking and there's the other side of all the other parking lots that are still here. And so I'm opened, I want to see if there's a way to include replacement parking. And also I hope that we can be creative in how we think about, are you walking a block to get different places? Because I think that even if there is that immediate parking, we will need more concentrated parking in other places. And that it can't. Yeah.
And I'll just, yeah, like, I don't think this is like, should be a difficult solve. Like, like there is a number of like multifamily housing projects that, you know, provide some amount of retail parking, have retail. And so we're not actually like, going to have retail necessarily as a part of the project, but we'll be serving retail on Santa Cruz. And then, of course, and with that, like, you know, customer employee parking, and then also some, some degree of, 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 of parking for the housing. So yeah, I don't, I don't think it, again, it's some Gordian knot, like, right? I do think it's a fairly simple, I hope it's somewhat simple. But, but I do think that, to think that, I don't think that a parking structure is an issue here. I do think we have to try to make sure we're retaining parking as close as we can. And in a lot of cases to, 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 to the retail on Santa Cruz.
And I think this is what actually argues against what I was saying, which is a comprehensive plan would probably be good. My thinking was largely colored by a conversation I had today with someone who's an architect who used to be on our planning commission, who said, remember when you do parking that you have to make it big enough because otherwise you've got all the ramps and all the infrastructure. And just a ton of, you know, basically a lot of space that is not really usable. But thankfully, the RFQ, or RF, whatever, and staff will be on that. Is there the other council input on this item? And are there any clarifying questions from staff?
It would be helpful if I could repeat back some of the main points that we heard.
Thank you.
So I think one of the things that we heard was in terms of the disposition process, moving forward with the exemption A that was laid out, which allows us more flexibility to go through the solicitation process that we choose. There was an interest in maintaining parking on the sites for residents and also employees and shoppers downtown.
Excuse me, do you want us to comment as you're going through these or at the end?
Yeah, I think, go ahead and interrupt me if there's clarification.
Just, yes, we need to have parking. Yes, we need to have replacement parking for the businesses. We need new parking for residents. We need to figure out employee parking. But how that actually happens, I wouldn't necessarily stipulate that. I'd leave that up to the, as part of the RFQ.
Thank you.
And to what Vice Mayor Combs said, part of, obviously try to, try to get stuff there, but there is flexibility. So I don't want to emphasize the flexibility that was mentioned.
Another aspect would be to really highlight and seek a partner who has experience in community outreach and involvement in the process of constructing a development on these sites and looking for that, that specialty. Focus on as many affordable units as possible. But highlighting that, that 30 to 50% AMI range is, is what we're looking at, the very low income level and potentially extremely low income if we can get those units incorporated.
I would have two comments. One is that I wouldn't have it absolutely mandatory that someone has the outreach portion. But it would be nice to have. And then we do also, I think, want family units. So a range of units. But again, that may be something that's phased where first we just go for, well, we'll see what happens.
Looking at the project objectives here for Bay Meadows, I think that it would be at the level, I don't, I don't think we need to specify less outreach, less experience, that's like a lesser priority thing. I think that is something that I want to make sure is on that list. If like, here's a list of, they have nine different project objectives. And that's one of them. And I think that's something that I would like to see on that list of eight to 10 bullets that we include in project objectives.
I would not rule out a developer if they don't have that, if everything else is spot on. Because I think that there are other ways to gain that. It's not that it's not necessary, but I do.
But are you saying that we don't want that on the short list, on the list of eight to 10 or so?
No, I would put it on the list of eight to 10, but I would make sure that people know that there is flexibility, that the applicants know there is flexibility.
So that, for example, the item that was listed here, it says involve the community during the design development process. That to me means outreach, and I think that will be essential.
Of course, that's essential. I think that we would all agree with that. But I don't think it's necessarily essential that, that is, that the developer has that, certainly they would need to be working with someone for that, but that they have that on the team. I wouldn't rule someone out just because they didn't have that on the team. But I think it will be definitely an essential piece of the project. Do you agree, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I think, I think we can structure it in a way so that they involve the community in the design process, whether that's a specialized member of the team or another partner that they bring on to do that process.
Thanks for clarifying. I appreciate it.
And then.
If, if I sort of along those lines, I mean, to me, how I would see it is that, like, has someone done this before? Like, right? And so, like, hopefully they've done it in a way that has involved like community outreach. But I think for me, the indicator is that for those applicants or developers who can sort of point to a project very similar or somewhat similar and say, like, we've done that.
Thank you. And then a couple of other items. So sustainability was a mention of 100% electric building. And then the initiatives in the climate action plan, making sure that we're in alignment with those, with any development that would happen on the sites and any sustainable approaches that they could incorporate. And then finally, financing of the sites, indicating how they would structure that and then acknowledging the city's contribution of land as part of our, as, as part of that project and how it would integrate into how they foresee financing. I believe that was, those were the main items that I had. Anything else of note?
That they use state density bonus or consider it certainly.
AHO and state density bonus law or?
Whatever they propose.
Thank you.
Again, all of these I see as suggestions. They don't have to necessarily hit every single one.
Thank you.
And I would hope that the city looks at best examples and use cases from our other RFQs, RFIs, and proposes as they come back to us, other things that should be on that list. Thanks.
I think you covered everything, Mr. Smith. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you everyone for your time on this item. And now if we're comfortable moving forward to item F, the consent calendar. Actually, before that, we will take an eight minute break, seven minute break now. And we will return at 9:20. Thank you. Actually, before that, we will take an eight-minute break, seven-minute break now, and we will return at 9:20. Thank you.
All right, having our city council back at our in-person deus, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron, and thank you everyone for your patience. The next agenda item is item F, Consent Calendar. Under the Consent Calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on our consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on consent calendar items F1, except city council meeting minutes, F2, adopting a resolution updating the event sponsorship policy, F3, adopting resolutions authorizing staff to submit applications to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority for Measures A and W Pedestrian and Bicycle Program, and F4, adopting a resolution authorizing staff to submit an application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority for Measure A Alternative Congestion Relief and Measure W Transportation Demand Management Program Funding. You are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, completing a speaker card at that back table, and returning to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on consent calendar items F1 through F4. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. At this time, is there a motion and a second on the table to approve the consent calendar?
I so move, and I'd also just like to comment on F3, on San Mateo County Transportation Authority Pedestrian and Bike Program. I'm really glad to see the, the city seeking construction funds for the Sharon Road, Eastridge Avenue and Oak Avenue, Oak Knoll, lane safety improvements. These are two that have been brought up to me and residents and students who have been, who use these roads and commuters who use these roads, and I'm grateful that we are pursuing this, so I so move.
A second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Dorr and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with city council member Woolison absent.
Thank you. Our next item is item H, Regular Business. Under Regular Business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is item H1, Adopt a Resolution to Amend the 2030 Climate Action Plan to Include an Implementation Scope of Work for 2025 through 2030. Here to introduce this item is our Sustainability Manager, Rachel Launder.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Good evening, city council and members of the community. Once again, my name is Rachel Launder, and I'm excited this evening to provide an overview of the city's 2030 Climate Action Plan, which we also refer to as the CAP. I will introduce the 2025 to 2030 scope of work, highlighting a key policy area for discussion. The 2030 CAP establishes a vision for a zero-carbon Menlo Park, where the city reduces its greenhouse gas emissions responsible for climate change by 90% citywide and captures the remaining 10%. There's been tremendous progress across the six strategies of the CAP that aim to electrify buildings, accelerate electric vehicle or EV adoption, promote biking, walking, and taking public transit, and preparing for the impacts of climate change that are already impacting our communities. Achieving a zero-carbon city is not a small feat. It takes participation from all of us. I am grateful to the Environmental Quality Commission for their commitment and their expertise, and to the city council for your leadership in elevating climate action as a priority. This work would also not be possible without our talented staff across city departments who embrace innovation, including my colleagues in Public Works, Community Development, Library and Community Services, Police, and Administrative Services. While we have made many strides towards achieving zero carbon, here are three great examples. There still remains an opportunity for us to work together for the next five and a half years to reach our shared vision. The 2030 CAP was first adopted in July 2020 and was amended in 2021 with an Implementation Scope of Work that prioritized actions taken to reduce emissions from the largest community contributors of greenhouse gas emissions, burning natural gas in our buildings to heat them, to heat our water, to cook, to dry our clothes, and burning gas when we drive our vehicles. The CAP is a living document that evolves based on community priorities, technology advancements, and alignment with county, state, and federal policies. The Environmental Quality Commission, or EQC, recognized an opportunity to map out the last five years of the CAP implementation and began considering updates to the scope of work in September of 2023. The EQC finalized its recommendations in May 2024 and staff evaluated actions for feasibility and identified additional actions that the city could take. I'll review each of the new actions across CAP strategy areas. Now, okay. So CAP strategy number one is to explore policy and program options to convert 95% of existing buildings to all-electric by 2030. Proposed new actions for the city to include in the CAP are adopting pre-wiring requirements for existing buildings in the short term and evaluating performance requirements for both new and existing buildings during the 2025 code cycle, supporting Peninsula Clean Energy in the development of programs for multifamily, developing additional program options to disperse California Energy Commission grant funds, including opportunities for our residents who are renting, as well as continuing to evaluate and enhance a permit streamlining program, create a community outreach plan and measurement dashboard, and requiring affordable housing built on city land to be all-electric. CAP strategies two and three were evaluated together. The actions needed to decrease gasoline sales, increase community-wide electric vehicle adoption, and expand the city's EV charging network are intertwined. New actions include promoting the wide array of EV programs available from our regional, state, and federal agencies that provide incentives, technical assistance, and education to both drivers and property owners for the purchase of EVs and the installation of EV charging infrastructure, expanding the city's EV charging network by exploring building code policies to increase EV charging in new multifamily, promoting focus on Level 1 and Level 2 charging, and considering the removal of fees from city-owned charging infrastructure. The last one here is increasing EV access in multifamily and commercial properties by exploring the creation of an inventory of installation opportunities and partnering with property owners to install EV chargers where we've identified opportunities. Electric vehicles are not the only strategy we have for reducing emissions from transportation. The 2030 CAP also establishes a strategy to reduce vehicle miles traveled by 25%. And new actions to achieve this include implementing the policies and programs in the housing element in transportation master plan, completing a shuttle study, and coordinating infrastructure improvements. For example, when streets are resurfaced, evaluating improvements that can be made for cyclists and for pedestrians at the same time. Additionally, we can work to provide more data publicly on our open GIS platform relative to where we have bike infrastructure, and we can engage the community on bicycling with fun events such as Love Our Earth Festival and the Bike Rodeos. The final one here is coordinating with the City-County Association of Governments, or C-CAG, on applying and updating transportation demand management requirements for development. CAP strategy number five focuses on what the city can do to eliminate the use of fossil fuels from our own operations. New actions here include leveraging grants and identifying new financing structures for electrification projects, electrifying fleet, electrifying our fleet and studying fleet rightsizing, utilizing an energy management system, and updating the municipal greenhouse gas emission inventory and publishing progress reports regularly. Additionally, with our facilities, we have the opportunity to study and look at ways to capture emissions from the landfill flare at Bedwell Bayfront Park, exploring microgrids, battery storage, and ways to power equipment using our electric vehicle fleet. And we still have some remaining emissions to plan for related to solid waste and our employee commutes. CAP six is our last strategy, and the EQC recommended expanding this strategy to look holistically at how the city can adapt and respond to the impacts of climate change going beyond sea level rise. The scope of work supports the implementation of the environmental justice element and is in alignment with state policies such as Senate Bill 272 requiring the city to adopt a regional shoreline adaptation plan. Additionally, the EQC recognizes that trees provide multiple benefits that support our communities, especially during high heat. Additionally, the EQC recognizes that trees provide multiple benefits that support our communities, uh, especially during high heat events. The scope of work includes the development of an urban forest management plan and tree planting. So now that we've reviewed each of the 2030 CAP strategies and the new actions proposed for the implementation scope of work, um, there's an opportunity to dive deeper, um, and get further policy direction on an EQC priority to adopt a local amendment to the city's building code to encourage electrification. The State California Building Standards Code provides the minimum building requirements for all types of constructions. It is adopted at the state level triannually, with the next code cycle beginning January one, 2026. The city then takes the state code and puts it into our own municipal code. Within the state code, there's the Energy Code and the California Green Building Standards, which you may know as CalGreen. Both parts can be amended at any time to increase the building code requirements above the current standards. Amending the Energy Code requires the city to demonstrate that the new requirements will result in energy savings for the building over the lifetime of the equipment. Staff evaluated a variety of local building code amendments that support electrifying buildings. This evening, staff would like to take the time to get council direction on three policy options, including option number one, amending CalGreen to expand pre-wiring requirements when a new panel is installed. Option two, amending the Energy Code to increase energy performance requirements for new buildings. And option three, amending the Energy Code requirements to increase, amending the Energy Code to increase energy performance requirements for existing buildings. Option one is one way to future-proof homes. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District, also known as BACMID, amended their rules banning the sale of gas water heaters, um, beginning in 2027 and gas furnaces beginning in 2029. Preparing for homes to be able to install electric upon the burnout of those gas equipments will be critical to facilitating a smooth transition. When an applicant is replacing or upgrading their panel, we could require that they include panel capacity and breaker space for future electrification, including the electrification of space heating and cooling, cooktop, water heating, EV charging, and a dryer. Additionally, they must provide a twenty-four, two-hundred-and-forty-volt branch circuit and outlet to be able to power a heat pump water heater. The second option, provided as a model code from Peninsula Clean Energy and adopted by East Palo Alto and Brisbane, requires a new construction applicant to design their building to have a greater energy performance following the path of their choice. They may choose to go all-electric or build with gas and electric appliances. This option is available for single-family, multifamily, and commercial buildings. I'm going to show examples of what a high-performing home would look like under the standard. So we'll start with the baseline. This is what a standard home designed to the 2022 Energy Code, which is the current code cycle we're in, would look like without any amendments. There'd be solar panels, potentially a gas furnace, a well-sealed and insulated building envelope, LED lighting, and a heat pump water heater. If the city were to adopt an energy performance approach aligned with PCE's model code, an applicant could comply by choosing an all-electric home. They'd also have the bonus of having air conditioning with that heat pump space heater. An applicant could also choose to have a mixed-fuel home. In order to achieve the same energy performance, they may need to add battery storage and increase rooftop solar panels, um, as well as increase the efficiency of their building envelope. Our third option here takes that same framework from option two and applies it to existing homes that are being remodeled. Significant remodels would be required to demonstrate energy performance by improving the building's insulation and air sealing, replacing appliances, or other upgrades that the homeowner can choose from. This policy was first adopted in San Rafael, and PCE has followed by developing a model ordinance for single-family alterations. Staff recommends bringing option one back for a first reading and waiting for the city's adoption of the state code in fall 2025 to consider adopting additional amendments that would increase energy performance. And we would look forward to hearing from the council on feedback and direction for that. With that, we have reviewed all the new actions in a rather fast pace, um, that the staff and EQC are recommending for inclusion into the 2030 CAP, and we've reviewed our key area for policy direction. I do have, um, Peninsula Clean Energy online, Blake Herschaft, as well as our consultants TRC, um, Myra Vega, and we have, um, our esteemed Assistant Development Director, Ron LaFrance, here too, who can answer some more of the technical questions around the building code requirements, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Londer, for the presentation, and are there any clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment? Councilmember Dor.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for the heads up about that 2025 state's Energy Code updates that would take into effect January first, 2026. Um, could you tell us, when will the, the prospect of whatever that is looking like, when will that be available for us? Um, I understand there's a public comment period and that's about to come to an end. When will we have a better sense as a city for what's on that list of proposed changes for 2026?
Sure. That meeting, um, with the California Energy Commission is September eleventh, um, so they'll be hearing the code requirements. And I think, Ron, I don't know if you're able to answer the question as far as like when the building official, um, kind of typically looks at that whole package and analyzes what it means for the city and starts putting it on city templates and preparing for, for local adoption.
Cause I, I think the, the clarifying bit on here is, it seems that cities can choose or have seen what, what that holds and then decided if they want to do more or different things upon that, and so I'm yes, curious about that process and what that timeline is like.
Good evening. The, um, the codes are published, technically published, uh, July first of the, the year of the codes, so July one, 2025. Um, and then at that point, jurisdictions have a hundred and eighty days or to the end of the year to adopt. And, um, they become, everything becomes effective January one. As, uh, Rachel said earlier, you can amend the codes at any time during the code cycle. Uh, they just, anything that has been applied for prior to the start of the, um, effective date of the amendments, um, are under whatever code cycle or whatever codes were in place when they applied. Anything after the effective date of the code amendments, uh, are subject to whatever the code amendments are.
So July of 2025, but it sounds like something is happening on September eleventh that is also useful of, of having information available to look at.
Yeah, so all of the code amendments have to go through the same, uh, public hearing process that we would do here locally. And, uh, so the Energy Commission's, um, going to have their hearing September eleventh to make whatever decisions, then, then they, it kind of goes from there. It's, um, but the public hearing piece is over. And, um, and the Energy Commission kind of works separately than from the Building Standards Commission. And they have been, uh, the last two code cycles have been very much ahead of the Building Standards Commission. So the Building Standards Commission probably won't get to the same state until after the first of the year, which is why I'm like, stuff happens, they post what's going to be going up, and, um, and then it's finally published.
We are working with TRC to understand what is coming. Um, so I know Myron and Blake are on the console, that they may have something to add around what sort of visibility or what's our crystal ball we have into the energy code.
Okay, so I will be, uh, promoting Blake and Myra here.
I can, I can speak a little more to that. Uh, my name is Blake Herschaft. I'm the Building Electrification Programs Manager for Peninsula Clean Energy. Uh, thank you so much for the time and bringing this discussion item today. Um, everything Ron said is correct. We basically expect to hear the final ruling this fall on the new code. Um, there are some items in there that some cities may consider adopting early. Some issues there are that, uh, what we expect to be published next July, which includes cost-effectiveness studies for the 2025 code, won't be available until then, so the CEC is recommended for some items, uh, that it might not necessarily be easy to adopt them earlier than that code cycle. Uh, we are working with the CEC to gain more clarity on that. Um, it's been a little slow going. We're conversing with them every month.
Thank you. And could you explain, um, in connection to this, I understand that some cities have chosen to go forward with an Energy Code, um, update. I'm, I'm thinking about Palo Alto just signed one, uh, off, San Jose, East Palo Alto, and then other cities are moving forward to Burlingame, Cupertino, Santa Monica, all in September, the city of San Mateo in October. How does their adoption of that energy performance standard fit in with what's happening at the state level with the 2025 Energy Code? And what, what is the overlap and what does that, the timelines look like?
So the, um, the things that you just mentioned that have either just been adopted or are going to be adopted are amending the current Energy Code. And to amend any particular Energy Code, you have to have a cost-effectiveness study that is approved by a local jurisdiction. Uh, once that code has been, uh, the two readings and has been adopted, it is then uh, sent to the Energy Commission who reviews the entire, um, the entire code of what's, what's been adopted. Uh, there are times that they make comments about certain things, and then, uh, that, that re-adoption process, the changes have to be made and things have to be re-adopted. Um, if the Energy Commission is fine with what you have adopted, they will approve it, and then the effective date, uh, when you set up the ordinance, you will say something, the effective date will be thirty days after the Energy Commission's approval, is how it's usually set up. So then thirty days afterwards, it's, it's ready to go, it's in effect.
Understood. So these other cities are, are moving ahead with an energy performance code at, right now with, within our current Energy Code, and then there'll also be a new Energy Code that comes online um, in 2026, so they're, they're deciding to do both, or I guess they don't have a choice in the second one, but they at least have a choice in the first one.
Right, so they, they will amend now, and then they will have to re-amend based on the new code, excuse me. Based on the new code, they will have to go through that amendment process and cost-effectiveness study again for the 2025 codes.
Okay, and sorry, one more question. I appreciate this inquiry. Um, pre-wiring was the first option kind of outlined by staff. Are there other cities that are doing that? Cause I, I'm looking, it, it's helpful to look at what other cities are doing and to see that a lot of people are doing energy performance co, uh, updates. Um, who is doing pre-wiring?
Uh, Portola Valley adopted that, uh, with the 2022 codes.
Anyone else?
The city of San Mateo did as well, and, um, the city of Mountain View will be having, um, I believe, a second reading, um, in an upcoming council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dor, and thank you for the follow-up. Uh, now, uh, I'd like the city clerk to take public comment on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item H one, Adopt a Resolution to Amend the 2030 Climate Action Plan to Include an Implementation Scope of Work for 2025, 2030. You are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Thank you. I currently have a five speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item H one. Okay, so it looks like we have a total of six speakers, and so with that, I will start with Brian Schmidt, followed by Jeff Schmidt.
Uh, good evening again, Brian Schmidt from Menlo Spark. Um, Menlo Spark submitted some extensive written comments on this subject. And, uh, I also have, uh, postcards from kids and a few adults, uh, which I'll give to the clerk. Hope you get a chance to take a look at them. They're, they're really good, very artistic, much better than anything horrible you would receive from me. Um, and for what it's worth, these are the people that are going to see what this climate is going to look like in twenty-one, twenty-one hundred and beyond. So something to, something to think about. Uh, our comments are focusing on, uh, building emissions, which is a very important aspect of the emissions in Menlo Park. Appreciate the progress on all the other subjects in the other CAP strategies. But as to the building emissions and stationary sources, um, to the extent that Menlo Park wants to be a leader, something that it said in the Climate Action Plan that is well situated to be a leader, uh, given that other cities have done either energy performance stands, uh, s- standards or Zero NOx, that is where Menlo Park would need to be to maintain its position of leadership, of, uh, basically option two that is outlined in, uh, in, um, in the staff report. Uh, one other thing I might point out about that option is if the had, in the process of adopting an energy performance standard and then having to re-amend, I would assume the re-amendment would be a very relatively easy lift because it would not be all that different from the, from the analysis that was done in order to adopt the energy performance standard in twenty, in 2024 or 2025. Um, I would add that there's some, uh, additional information that the council might want to consider before it provides direction to staff. I don't know if you want to wait before you provide that additional direction, but some of that information might concern, uh, your neighboring city, Palo Alto, which about five or six months ago was exactly where you, where Menlo Park is today, and now they have energy performance standards. So it might be interesting to take a look at that process and how much effort went into, to making that happen. Uh, in addition, uh, Palo Alto, uh, for their energy performance standards requires them for substantial remodels, which I think is not part of the 2025 Energy Code. So that's an opportunity to add, to, to match them and do something that's more than just simply relying on the 2025 Energy Code. Um, and, uh, the city might also want to take a look at what's happened in San Jose because they've had energy performance standards for a number of years, so you have a track record to take a look at. And that might be very interesting information for staff to dig up and to feed to you all as you make your decisions. Uh, option three, I just want to add, that's a very interesting, very, uh, potentially very useful options for the city because it just focuses on single-family homes. You might want to consider balancing that with something focusing on larger structures, particularly commercial buildings. Building performance standards that address large buildings might address that as well. Thank you. And I'll turn in the cards.
Thank you, Brian. Next up is Jeff Schmidt, followed by Susannah Hill.
Um, City Council, thanks for the opportunity to comment. Um, I actually get to wear my official hats, uh, rarely as the Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission, so, um, and I'm Jeff Schmidt, sorry, I should probably remember that. Um, I really only wanted to say a couple of things. One is, um, being directly involved in this work along with our, um, kind of wild and innovative and very energetic members of the Environmental Quality Commission has been, uh, a privilege and mostly because it's a dedicated group of folks who are behaving as sort of resident activists. And I think a lot of what you see in the work is due to, um, city staff, uh, Rachel, Ori, and Liz, uh, being so, um, so, such good collaborative partners. Um, they are probably the best city team that, uh, we have in the county as far as innovation and allowing us to really move forward in some advanced ways. So no matter what you believe about how far we should go and how fast we should go, um, one is, I think we should really take advantage of the amazing staff that we have. While we have that window of everybody here, it's sort of this moment in time to make progress for our kids and our city and our family. Um, the second thing I want to say is no matter where you come down on the climate, whether you're conservative, whether you're progressive, um, I've got three boys, and this work is all done. The hours that we put in is for mostly that generation. Sure, we have climate change here today, but please don't forget as we're thinking about this and debating about this over the next four or five years, it really is for kids, grandkids, the stuff that Brian was saying, you know, that, that's who's going to feel all the stuff in these decisions we're making, so. Kids, grandkids, the stuff that Brian was saying, you know, that that's who's going to feel all the stuff in these decisions we're making. So. Whilst we have an energetic E Q C, whilst we have an amazing staff who puts in hours and hours of collaborative work and really helps us innovate and move forward. Um, please just kind of keep that in mind as we have this window of opportunity. Um, within this five year period. And um, so I just wanted to do a shout out to. The amazing staff that we have and and all the hard work that's going into this. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Susannah Hill, followed by John McKenna.
Hi, my name is Susannah Hill. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I live in Menlo Park. This scope of work is thoughtful and uh, very complete. Regardless of which pieces of it you may or may not believe have been pushed far enough. It is what we have and it makes Menlo Park. Capable of making a difference and. Taking a leadership position in California as a city that is willing to make hard choices and. Put in firm guidelines for how we wish to take climate action. Thanks.
Thank you, Susannah. Okay, coming over to John McKenna, followed by Bruce.
Can you hear me?
Uh, can you say that again, John?
Can you hear me?
Yes, um, if you can just give us a little bit more volume, that would be great.
Okay, uh, Mayor Taylor, fellow council members and city staff. My name is John McKenna and I serve as Vice Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission. I am speaking this evening as an individual. Apologies for not being there in person. I want to thank city staff for their time and efforts on the cap scope of work. I sent in written comments earlier today related. To specific recommendations pertaining to cap strategy number one, which among other things urged council to choose option two. To adopt an enhanced energy performance code now and not wait a year plus for the state code. Should there be a desire for further discussion on any of my recommendations, I would welcome the opportunity to meet with any relevant stakeholders. In looking at the overall cap goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by twenty thirty. And the timeline left to meet that goal. I would like to suggest the city take a forward look at what specifically needs to be done to meet that goal. As you can see in the proposed amendments to the cap, the city's emissions have only been reduced by eighteen hundred metric tons. Between the period of two thousand seventeen to two two thousand twenty one, a pace of four hundred and fifty metric tons per year. In order to meet the city's goal, emissions need to be reduced another two hundred and forty seven thousand metric tons over the next five years. A pace of forty nine thousand metric tons per year, which is more than one hundred times faster than the pace of two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty one. Clearly, we have a lot of work left to do to meet our goal. With that in mind, I would suggest the city take a closer look at the twenty twenty five, twenty thirty implementation scope of work. And assign an estimation of the emission reductions associated with each action. This will allow the city to determine if the emissions reductions associated with the listed actions. Will add up to a number that meets the city's goal and which actions are most impactful. It could also be helpful to create some specific metrics and dates over the next five years for achieving those steps so that we can measure progress. And I would offer that the E Q C could provide meaningful resources and assistance in this forward looking endeavor. As a member of the E Q C, I feel a deep responsibility to ensure the city does everything it can to meet the overall cap goal. Meeting that goal will have tremendous benefits for the entire Menlo Park community and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next will be Bruce, followed by Angela Evans.
Hi, this is Bruce Nagel. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, um, I want to emphasize uh, the points that John made. I think he he made some very critical points that are important for doing this. The first is. Is you're not going to know that you're getting anywhere if you're not measuring it. And so it's important, you know, once you've set up the important goals that you need to do, that you really. Measure it on a frequent basis and know if there's something that's not going well, that you have an opportunity to correct it and put it back on track. And um. The other thing is, is that you you need to make sure that you're you're filtering this through all the operations. I mean, it was interesting to begin with it. The first part of the meeting, there was discussion about this um. Housing unit that's being proposed. Betsy and Ass finally. Connected together and said, you know, we need to do something about the sustainability. And I think that's an important concern concern that you make sure that that you're talking about in every opportunity. So. It sounded to begin with, although it seems like it's connected now, that there was a discussion about housing, there was a discussion about sustainability. And to begin with, the housing didn't discuss that, but we need to think about that in all. Opportunities that we make sure that we look at the sustainability parts of it. Uh, another important part of it, which is a subset of this, but is important, and that is. We need to work on multifamily buildings. It's going to be important with more and more people moving to to that thing and especially in addressing for the uh. Uh, low income uh, environments. So. Let's make sure that um, we've got a good way to address that. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Angela Evans, followed by Adina Levin.
Hi, this is Angela Evans. Thank you, City Council, and to Rachel for your terrific presentation and to all of the staff involved. As you know, I am a director at Menlo Spark, but I am speaking here tonight as myself. A resident of Menlo Park and parent of two school age children. As you consider our city's climate action plan and in particular. Those measures that could regulate the fossil fuels used in our buildings and the associated pollution from that usage. I hope you'll give consideration to two major things that I'll articulate now um, that can help keep our city's leadership on climate. Which is at least option two with no delay until next year. Um, as it all relates to building emissions. So my first thing. So since our last uh, study session, I realize this is not a study session, but since our last study session on. Carbon pollution from buildings now many years ago. Our region and our city specifically have made significant progress in a variety of areas that make it much easier. To install electric heat pump appliances, reducing friction by updating our city zoning ordinances and making some city commitments to improve permitting timelines. In the spring, a webinar that was cosponsored by all of our region's C C As. Featured the city of Sunnyvale and the city of San Jose for its online on demand permitting issuance feature. Which enables quick and painless permitting for same location heat pump water heaters. And we also know that the grand majority of homes can be fully electrified without upgrading the electrical panel. Um, saving homeowners significant hassle and expense. And this takeaway has now become very mainstream with ample material in recent media and on the clean Peninsula Clean Energy website. So in other words, the logistics involved with home and building electrification have only gotten smoother and easier. We now have so many examples of fully electrified, single family homes in our very own city. And we even have our city's first multifamily home being fully electrified with construction underway. So our our capabilities and knowledge have grown since we last studied these in depth, and I encourage all of us to leverage that. We can do this. The second thing, so you know, we all are aware of the major climate trade offs of of inaction like sea level rise. I'm not going to spend time on that here, but. There's one trade off that in my opinion does not get enough attention. Um, so I'm going to amplify it. We know now that the combustion of gas appliances in buildings contributes significantly to pollution inside and outside of buildings. But did you know that more of our region's smog, you know, that haze that we all see in the skyline? Is generally due more so to pollution from gas appliances and buildings than from all of our gas passenger vehicles combined? I'm running out of time, but I want to say it's a very big deal. And so I hope you'll acknowledge that trade off to our very own Menlo Park city residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Adina Levin.
Uh, good evening. Um. First, I wanted to uh, echo the comments from the people on the E Q C and involved in various uh, different. Uh, environmental groups in supporting the um, option two, looking at the performance standard. Approach to advance the um. The uh, clean uh, buildings. Um, second comment I wanted to make was to appreciate the item in the plan. About um, the transportation demand management. Um, starting with uh, working with uh, C C A G. And I think that that's a fine first step, but. Given that there are some other cities in our area that have stronger goals and 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 stronger programs. Than the C C A G, which is a reasonable starting place, that we can even go further than that. And uh. Uh, this connects to the comment about the um, transportation and. The um, housing in the downtown area. Um, you know, there were comments about the sustainability um, of of the potential new developments and. The uh, transportation is typically the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions and. Um, associated with the um, like with the building. So. Helping uh, residents in the building to uh, you know, uh, practically uh, drive less. Um, as much as is feasible, but you know, not more is a good idea and is also very practical with like many, many local examples that uh, we can do. And then lastly, and relatedly, um, I am wondering if it makes sense to add. Um, activity that the council can take in participating in regional discussions and decisions. To improve our public transportation system to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So um, for one example. The uh, bus that uh, crosses on the Dumbarton Bridge. Uh, does not uh, run on the weekend and has some uh, other limits. This has been encouraged. Uh, this has been included in a regional transportation plan, but for fifteen years in the future. We can certainly have a better Dumbarton uh, bus sooner than that. And having our city councils um, support. For a variety of regional public transportation improvements can help us reduce V M T in our city. We can't do it alone, but our city council can add its voice into others. And help improve um, those uh, decisions that reduce vehicle miles traveled serving our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Um, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you for everyone that provided public comment. And Ms. Levin, just wanted to follow up real quickly because. I know that there are a few seats available on the C C A G committee vacancies. Um, I believe there are five seats available on the congestion management and environmental quality committee. First comment. The second is the Dumbarton Bridge Express. It's my understanding, at least a few years ago, the reason why it runs the hours that it does is because of. Drivers. Being able to hire drivers on the weekends. Not sure if that's still the same reason as it is now. But I appreciate you bringing that up. Let's see. So thank you. And I don't know if the council members already have a list of things they would like to cover on this item. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I I don't have a list of things I'd like to cover and I imagine um. Like sort of the bulk of our discussion will be around like the building standards and codes, but I I do want to point out with regards to strategy five of eliminate the use of. Fossil fuels from municipal operations. That that there is a. A report in an update as part of this um, agenda. Um, as it relates to the um, police department's pilot of of Teslas. Um, that there have been a number of challenges there. Um, and that it it appears that um. Um, you you know, at least in Menlo Park, Teslas will not be the police cruiser of of the future. And so I do think it's fair, it's important to point that out because it, if I'm a resident, it could seem like. The right hand doesn't know what the the left hand is doing and want to acknowledge that. Um, you you know, the city has pursued certain strategies in a pilot. As relates to implementing that strategy and the feedback that we've gotten. Um, has been that 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 was um. It's not the, that's not the future for Menlo Park. And so I did want to want to point that out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Um, I have a a few questions and this is regarding the options one, two and three. For the building codes and just want to find out if there was a cost analysis done. On, on each one of them.
Yeah, so the cost effectiveness study that's required. To be reviewed by council and submitted to the California Energy Commission has been prepared by T R C. Um, so they can answer further questions on on what that analysis looks like, but demonstrates for our climate zone. That it would be cost effective to um, move forward with the energy performance requirements if we wanted.
Thank you. I see Mayra's on, so wasn't sure if you wanted to follow up on that question.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, yes, Mayor Vega from T R C. Thank you, Mayor Taylor and council. Um, yeah, just wanted to reiterate what Rachel said, that we do have um, cost effectiveness studies that are. Uh, ready um, for, and we, we referenced both of, we referenced both of them for energy performance approach for new construction. And for um, existing buildings as as well. And we will submit that as uh, part of um, an ordinance. Uh, package as well when we, uh, if we get your authorization to work through the details of an ordinance. So we will have that ready.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs, did you have a follow? I I do, but I was going to go to something else. Okay. Thank you. Um, my next question is, this is actually about cap six strategy. Develop a community adaptation plan. To protect, to develop a climate adaptation plan to protect the community from sea level rise and flooding. And my question is, how does this include the commercial? Property since it is near residential? I know that one company has committed funding to sea level rise, but that is one out of, I don't know, maybe about nine or ten. So just wanted to find out how. Commercial property will be contributing to the sea level rise challenges.
Yeah, there's, there's two things I'd like to elevate here as we kind of scope what our adaptation plan could look like. Um, we, as I mentioned, are tracking Senate Bill two seven two from the Bay Conservation and Development Commission. Um, the requirements to develop a regional shoreline adaptation plan. Um, and they will be presenting their guidelines. October seventeenth um, for the public to to review. Um, and that. Specifies how the city should plan for commercial sites um, as it relates to sea level rise. And so. We're working um, closely as a, as an internal team um, and with neighboring jurisdictions to to understand how um, we need to plan for that. As part of cap six. And then um, the other piece is. We would initiate a scoping process with the E Q C to align with the state's framework around climate, climate adaptation. Um, and that would involve engaging stakeholders um, like our business community. And so. The E Q C would be a part of, you know, identifying those stakeholders and and strategy, and we would likely come back to council. Um, before we finalize that scope.
Thank you. And then um, one last question, and this is on. Cap four, um, the new ones that are added, and that's engaging community on bicycling. So by chance, would this include having a bike share program or or something that? Uh, some program that provides bikes for those who don't have it or. This issue came up, um, I believe it was one day that there was extremely bad traffic on Willow Road, and so. Folks ended up parking their car and walking home. So if there's opportunity to have some type of bike share so that. This could become a regular practice of folks to be able to ride their bike to work or ride their bike home.
That's a type of um, creative ideas we'd like to capture now so we can put it into the scope. The bike share is not a part of um. The vision around bicycle engagement. It was more around safe routes to school um, and engaging um, folks of all ages through events. Um, that the, that the city hosts. Um, so bike share would be an option. I I've seen it in other climate action plans and. And we could evaluate that and add it in today. and we could evaluate that and add it in today.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
Okay, I just, again, going into the like sort of the direction as it relates to like sort of building electrification. So the staff is recommending the sort of pre-wiring option one. So I assume that that's good with the city attorney. It would be great to get the city attorneys take on like sort of this option to the performance standards that that come before the state, like obviously I know if the state acts, then we're all good. And option three, just to get a sense on where where you are out on that. And I will say, well, I'll let you, you tell us where you're at first.
Thank you. I have reviewed the energy performance measure ordinance that was drafted or proposed by P C E. This is the same ordinance that Palo Alto recently adopted, and I believe some of the other cities that Rachel mentioned. I do think that that ordinance is compliant with recent laws regarding reach codes as to implementation prior to the state. As the building official said, we can, the city can do that. I'll let the city manager's office and Rachel speak to the capacity to do that. But that is something, that is an option that the city has. And I've reviewed option three as well. And depending on what that ordinance looks like, also agree that that would be consistent with current law on reach codes and other electrification requirements.
And included in that current law is case law specifically.
Yeah, so, so the reason that the performance measure model proposed by P C E is consistent with the C R A versus Berkeley decision is it essentially provides a menu approach, which doesn't effectively prohibit or ban any one covered gas appliance. And so while it seeks to achieve energy efficiency measures by requiring some electrification, it doesn't prohibit any one appliance, which is what the C R A versus Berkeley decision got at.
And then back, back to staff. And so your hesitance as it relates to option two, since the city manager has signed off on it. Excuse me, not the city manager, the city attorney not has signed off on it, but doesn't at this moment see that is in conflict with any law. And where it certainly seems more likely or makes a greater effort or giving getting us towards our goals than is the hesitation, just the resourcing?
Yeah, I think the resourcing and then also the timeline we have. By the time we would, you know, get this in front of council again for a first reading and a second reading. And if we're looking at expanding beyond single family, we would have to go into community engagement to commercial and multifamily properties, developers. We wouldn't anticipate to have, you know, an ordinance on the book until spring 2025. And that only gives us a couple, you know, maybe six to nine months of coverage. And looking at, you know, past permit data, that would be maybe eight to 10 homes that are being built during that time period. And so thinking about the amount of hours, it always takes more than we think, and we estimated together that it would take 150, but we think it would probably take more to get this across the finish line to electrify perhaps eight new homes. We see a really big trade off there when we're considering the state grant that we have in front of us and all of these other priorities in the cap. And so it's exciting. We're excited to see that the state is doing it and feel that we can easily put together the electrification ordinance since we don't need to go to the C E C. And it would help future proof homes. And so thinking about capacity, that's where we've landed.
And just, and then that, that sort of eight homes is based on, you know, the presumption that like those projects would then go to like gas options, like right, whereas, I mean, there's nothing preventing them now. Right from doing that. So it might not even be eight. It could be two or four or something like that. Where, where you're actually sort of mandating a something different. Do we know, and this could have been in the staff report, and I miss it like right now, and since again, we're in this phase where certainly people can obviously utilize natural gas options. What is new construction in the city looking like as far as that split like? Since people are able to do that now, are people doing that? Are what's, is it 50 50 or 100% going?
Yeah, we've been working with T R C to analyze that data. And it turns out it's not so clean when we pull reports from the cell. And so anecdotally, I have, you know, from one permit text, she said she's seen two resubmittals to include gas for new homes. I don't know, Ron, if you have any other anecdotal information or if that's a data point we can come back with.
I don't have any further anecdotal information, though. The information is collectible. However, the process to collect it will be to go and pull each set of plans that has been submitted and or issued. And then check that set of plans for what was, what was designed in.
Yeah, I would be more like net new plans, so not like sort of plans that be that are have been resubmitted, but any plans like right now that come to you new, like on average, like, are you seeing that, that, that those folks are still mainly relying on electrification as it relates to home appliances and other, or or is it gas or is it, is it a mix?
If I had to guess, it would be a mix. There, there are people that are actively pursuing electrification. And then there are those that aren't. The old way is the good way, and I know it works. So if we could, we could go back, there have been about 25 new homes submitted. Some of those are ADUs. But we, we could go back to figure out since the start of the year what that is, or we could start tracking as of September 1, figure out a way to track it. It would be a manual tracking would not be through the database.
I'm, to be clear for my, I'm not asking to try because again, like I think I think for a city our size, the numbers are all anecdotal. Right here at this moment, and given that that lifetime horizon, but, but I, I was you know, just curious, but it is clear that some folks are taking advantage of the fact that like, that for some appliances, they don't have to electrify and they are very much utilizing that. And, and so, so, so that, that that again, anecdotally has, has, has value. So those are all my questions. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm curious, when staff put together this report, had they had a chance to review the cities that have already done the energy performance reach code? Because when I've spoken to some folks, I got mixed answers. And so I would love to hear. You know, have, have staff had a chance to review in advance of this? The Palo Alto energy approach, what have, what's been implemented in East Palo Alto and the other cities that, that Blake from P C E mentioned?
Yes, yeah, definitely. We have been tracking and we continue to track what other cities are doing. Honestly, very few in San Mateo County are moving forward at this point, less than half. With even kind of study sessions, I think there's five or so cities tracking for study sessions in October on the same topic on whether or not to pursue a reach code this cycle. So having the same conversations, we meet regularly as city staff. Once a month, sustainability staff convene through the regionally integrated climate action planning suite provided by the county. The county has not yet had this conversation at the Board of Supervisors. But we have found the most inspiration in East Palo Alto and Brisbane with the energy performance, which is why we have amplified it as one of the options.
I'm curious, I, I thought was mentioned that this county of San Mateo is moving forward with this in October. And so I'm, I appreciate that there's a choice here of which option do we do? How long will it be in place before things move over to the 2025 energy code? But I'm just curious if you have a sense of, you know, what is inspiring then the county and these other cities to go ahead and move forward this even in October? Given the timeline that you, you gave, and I'm curious if there's any insight there.
As far as inspiration, I think it all comes down to we have our caps. We had thought we had taken care of existing buildings, and so we've all gone back to the drawing board and are frantically, you know, trying to find ways to address it. I think what makes Menlo Park different is the county and other agencies don't have a ton of other programs that are already in place or grant funding. And so policy has been kind of their, their primary place of influence. And so with, with our city here, I mean, the county doesn't have an environmental quality commission. Many of our cities don't. I know, you know, Palo Alto doesn't, doesn't have one that's active related to the cap. And so we have, have a more robust suite of programs. And from my perspective, I'm pretty concerned about spending down the C E C grant funding by June 2026. And so we have this really unique opportunity that other cities don't have. And so when I think about the eight to 10 homes versus the 110 homes, we could do with that grant funding, those are kind of the decisions that, that we think about. And and Ron here is my trusty partner in getting all the permits and and all of that work completed with the P C E team and Franklin Energy and that won't be a small feat either to review those applications.
Gotcha. In the proposed option one pre-wiring, you mentioned the timeline for the energy performance code standards. What would the timeline be for the pre-wiring?
So the pre-wiring does not amend the energy, energy code. It amends Calgary, and so it does not require the cost effectiveness study. It doesn't require anything beyond the two introduction and the second reading and adoption by the council and then gets filed with Building Standards Commission.
How effective is pre-wiring at helping us achieve our decarbonization goals?
It, it has proved, been proven effective in primarily, I would say with water heaters. When your water heater goes out, you're out of hot water. If you are not pre-wired for a water heater, you have to go get an electrician to run the circuit over to the water heater, and then you have to get the plumber in to put in the water heater. That's a week or two of coordination. If you're really hustling, and I think that's in the current, the 2022 energy code, one of the requirements for a new home is to pre-wire to the water heater location and have it set. And it's for that very reason that if that gas water heater, when that gas water heater dies, you can quickly replace it with an electric heat pump water heater in the same amount of time that it would take you to replace a gas water heater. So that's, that's probably the single most important piece of that. The second part is very much reserving all of the breaker space. Instead of having new panels put in that would be once the mandate to electrify an existing home comes into place, making sure that they have the capacity, both physical capacity in the panel and the electrical capacity in the panel to handle that electrification without having to do any further work on the panel or having any further interaction with P G and E.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Evans during the public comment mentioned that many homes don't need to rewire panels. And so I'm curious if a sense of what percentage of homes probably need to be rewired because I want to make sure that whatever we put forward is, is being effective. And so I'm curious, how, how useful does this feel to pursue option one?
So option one is based on a new panel being installed voluntarily. So it is not based on an existing electric panel.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I'll pause there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Dora. Councilmember Nance.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that's been done and by staff, by E Q C, by our residents who are adopting this. And I think that where I'm landing is, as has been pointed out by several people, just we have a magnificent staff at this point. And we really need to utilize their time, their expertise and all. And I look at the list of options for what is being proposed for implementation scope for work for 2025 to 2030. And under the, there's eight different options under the cap strategy, among which is spending the $4.5 million that we have, which I think is of utmost importance. I think everybody would agree that we want to electrify the 110 homes and really utilize that grant funding that was the state funding. There's also option opportunities to gather more data, which as was stated by the one of the speakers is how we will really be able to look at our program, be able to expand it. And so given that staff is recommending option one, and obviously is also very interested in being a climate leader, doing as much as we can, but that's where they have come down. That is what I support. And I would request that as we have time to do more, you know, if there is a chance to do more to perhaps do something with the new energy code as it comes out next spring. If you see opportunities and we have the capacity, obviously that would be terrific. But I would support the proposal as you have put it forward. I would also was wondering whether there's anything we can do as far as further incenting people to electrify their homes and possibly giving priority to people who are doing 100% electrification, either they currently have 100% electrification, they're proposing it, it's a new home having 100% electrified building, whether we can do anything with perhaps giving them priority within our planning and building process. And whether that's something that would be, again, just sort of amplifying voluntary electrification.
I can start with the, or is it appropriate to respond now?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, the mayor.
First, I just want to get clarity on the direction for kind of evaluating with 2025. Is that something the council would like us to kind of formally consider because it would take, you know, hours to kind of start doing some outreach and looking at the options. And we haven't fully engaged in that yet without direction. So just that, that's one response to the first comment. And then as far as prioritization, starting September 1, we're prioritizing solar permits as part of the state's requirement for same day permit issuance for new solar systems. And so you know, there's, there's a part of the prioritization. So it's a, it's a creative idea aligned with some of what we're already doing. Some initial thoughts that came to my mind were around how we have other priorities relative to building around housing production. And so if there's a conflict of prioritizing electrification projects over new A D U or multifamily. And I'm sure there's a ton of operational considerations that maybe we could talk through and see if this idea could, could be further developed.
Ms. Linder, you mentioned eight to 10 homes is what you'd expect in the next year. I think what I'm most concerned about is the, the bang for our buck on multifamily development and on commercial. And what are we doing to support folks electrifying there? And so I want to clarify, does the pre-wiring choice that you've lined up here include multi, multifamily and commercial?
It does not.
So there's no, no suggestion here for multifamily or commercial?
So the pre-wiring Calgary is for residential. And the residential provisions of Calgary also include multifamily. They do not include non-residential.
But they do include multifamily?
Yes, they do.
Okay, that's great to know. Yeah, I'm, and clarification, you mentioned this, this more of a seamless permitting system for solar. Are, where are we on how the permitting is to go to, to just to make the switch to electric appliances and equipment in the home? appliances and equipment in the home? Because I think if we're thinking about creative solutions, I would love an update on where that is because I think that's also a really critical piece.
Okay, so currently, well, current twenty, I think, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, we adopted a state mandated ordinance prioritizing photovoltaics. And so that has been in effect since then. It was really in effect before that. It just was memorialized with the ordinance. And then what is going to go live front part of September is the same real time photovoltaic permitting. So you will apply and you will get your permit, assuming you go through the entire process and pay your fees. So that will go live in September. A D Us are currently prioritized within the state law in that the from especially from the zoning perspective, thirty day turnaround on the review. And then also with the building. So those are already currently prioritized.
But other appliance electrification is not?
Yeah, so we do have the permit fee waiver program.
Yes.
Right, I'm not I'm not asking about waivers. I'm asking for the time timeline for how long it is to apply.
So there's the application which we have, just for clarity. The application process is incumbent upon the applicant to complete. And then then there is, once that is done, there is the plan review process. All the electrification that are subject to a fee waiver are reviewed in house. And so our turnaround times are quicker, though that is not a formalized. That's not a formalized system. It is just, it's just, we're doing a lot of those. And we keep them in house because of the fee waiver. So they are they are ostensibly being prioritized without us saying they're being prioritized.
Are other cities adopting a streamlined process for more immediate confirmation and and permits on these other appliances beyond solar?
That I'm not familiar with. I so I can't speak to.
I'm not aware of that. There is a conversation happening across the Bay Area on September tenth, hosted by the Bay Area Regional Energy Network. And that the conversation will focus on ideas to improve permit streamlining. The county has also started a pilot to study different ideas for permit streamlining. And we had an initial informational interview where we shared what our processes were and where some opportunities could be. But we have not yet heard back from them, and that call was about a month ago.
Thank you. Thanks for the chance to ask all these questions because it is helping me piece things together. I'm really eager to see us move on this. Buildings and transportation are the two biggest sources of emissions for our city. And especially buildings is the opportunity I see is where the city can really act and show up to meet our climate action plan. We have such an ambitious goal, and we are behind. It was really powerful to hear a public commenter mention we need to do a hundred times more than we're doing a year. And I'm I'm thinking about it as a as emissions. I'm also thinking about health, the the health impacts of being exposed to these indoor air pollutants is quite horrible. I have asthma. I grew up with asthma and childhood asthma rates go up when you're exposed to 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 these harmful indoor air pollutants. And so this this feels really important on multiple levels. And I would like to see us do the most ambitious thing. I would like to see us follow what so many other cities across the Bay and California are doing by pursuing the energy performance code. And I think that there's a lot we can learn. I'm glad to hear the city staff are in conversation with East Palo Alto Palo Alto. But I wonder what efficiencies we can learn from how they're not just using the code, but then actually implementing and rolling it out. And I would hope that would cut down on the time. And I think my hope too here is is to see us move beyond making sure we're really thinking about multifamily, really thinking about commercial, making sure the city is using the four point five million that we have, making the the process for for getting these permits for electrification easier. And so there's a lot of things on my mind and that in addition to this this huge need and opportunity to address the twenty twenty five state clean state energy code updates. And that's a time where that that's kind of triggering reach codes to happen. And so I'm really eager for us, for the city council to continue that conversation. If September eleventh is when information is coming out with more more details on what that looks like. If we can get a head start, if the staff can get a head start on reviewing that, so the new council in the in the spring can start evaluating options, do the public outreach and the engagement needed. So everyone, everything is set up to be successful before this comes into effect for January first, twenty twenty six. That is what I would hope to see.
So I agree with what you're saying. And one of the things that I'm excited about is when I look at the scope of work, the eight items are building codes, multifamily electrification support, community electrification, outreach dashboard, permit streamlining is on the list, affordable housing, onsite energy generation, online electrification education hub. So I think a lot of the ideas that you spoke about are on this list, which is what makes me excited to actually give, make sure that the staff has the capacity to move on these.
Thanks for saying that. And I do, I respect staff and I appreciate you saying of what what you think the the time limitations are to achieve as much as we can for the community. And so thank you for raising that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Dora and Councilmember Nash. And just since it is ten forty two, trying to gauge where we are, I heard Councilmember Nash support option one. Councilmember Dora, it's option two, I believe.
Well, I would want option one and two.
Oh, you want one and two.
I'm curious what whether mayor and vice mayor are.
You and and that part I am initially, well, one and two makes sense. Initially, it was definitely supportive of option two. And just I'm looking at staff capacity, the new laws that are coming and what is realistic for Menlo Park. And I know we can be ambitious, but I want to make sure that we also can measure our success as opposed to having a plate too heavy to carry. So and and I take staff's recommendation as far as what that will look like, what you and your team are capable of doing and what we already know that not just our environmental quality commission wants, but also the city council as well. So I'm I'm here to support staff's recommendation.
I'm curious, Mayor Taylor, would that include looking at what could be done with the twenty twenty six implementation of the state energy code?
Well, that we would have to do anyways, is my understanding. Or no? Oh, it depends on the timing.
I can add here. Staff's recommendation is to look at performance as part of the twenty twenty five code cycle that starts on January one, twenty twenty six. So taking the twenty twenty five state code, evaluating where there may be opportunities or gaps and where we can have a local amendment that we would preferably adopt at the time that we're adopting the the code package when our community is anticipating those changes.
Were you asking for the timeline of of when you'd when would city council hope that you start reviewing that? I wasn't sure if that was part of what you had asked.
Yeah, so just making sure we have guidance that as we look at the twenty twenty five code cycle adoption, that we also have direction to look at amendments or energy performance specifically across. It'd be good to specify too if it's for new and existing and then what building types, single family, multifamily and commercial.
I'm supportive of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, whatever you can do, if you can get into two, I'm I'm there. It really depends on what you think the, you know, as you go along, what the staff capacity is.
Yeah, I would just like add that, you know, Menlo Park has been a leader. And, you know, you don't always have to be a leader in everything, you know, sometimes you're at the front of the peloton. Sometimes you're in it and you're you're getting protection from the winds. And, you know, Menlo Park was in front as related to the reach codes, which are now void because of court challenges. And I, you know, this time around, maybe feel a little more comfortable in waiting till there is some cover from from the state. And let's be clear, like, these new performance code standards are likely to be challenged also in court. So it's it's not clear that like that it's going to be clean sailing with 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 them and that there isn't going to be some possible hiccups. Not saying that those challenges will 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 be sustained, but it's it's not. I think it's still lots of challenges ahead. And and so in this case, I would be okay with with following following staff's staff direction. And and, you know, sort of leaning into the the prewiring, which doesn't come with some of the additional requirements that the performance codes come with. And so I think that that that's where I'm at. I would though cycle back very quickly to just the the Teslas. I'm not going to get over them. Because I do want to point out, like, I was supportive of of that that effort and and I was supportive because I thought that too often government like sort of imposes on people and doesn't have a clear understanding of what that actually entails or the challenges that go with that. And I thought to some degree we were doing that with reach codes, which I was supportive of. But I thought that there there were challenges with some of those implementations that residents came to me with. That in some cases, the technology wasn't completely there across the board. And 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 so I was always for the the moment in which the city could take on for itself and say, hey, we're not just telling what people what they should do, but we're also like being an example ourselves and saying that we're we're going to sort of be part of this this transition. And so I would just sort of think, you know, add that we should also be mindful in remembering those instances where we have as a city taken on these these challenges and they have really been challenging, that it is not just about like sort of writing the code, but at some point someone actually has to has to go through all the process of 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 adhering to that that code. And it's not always it's not always that that easy. And especially if that requires like, you know, having P G E return your calls. And I can speak to that from personal experience. It can be, it can be very challenging on the ground. These things that we talk about in very sort of academic and rarefied terms up here sometimes. So with that out, I'll get off my soapbox.
I agree that I think that if this is what you're saying, I think I'm very proud that we tried the Teslas. And not everything works. And I think that the analysis that Mr. Paz wrote up is very thorough, very analytical. I appreciate all the work that the police department did with working through all the bumps and everything that with the Tesla pilot. And also how Chief Norris really has embraced the sustainability of the city and is bringing that throughout his department, as are all the departments in the city. And I think that it's it is really, it also was a very transparent process, which I think has been very positive. And then I was really tickled to see the other day that the city of South Pasadena has now gone entirely with the Tesla police vehicles. They just got twenty vehicles or twenty or twenty three, and they are entirely Tesla police vehicles now. And so it's just fascinating to watch the cycle and.
Yeah, just added that. That's exactly what I was saying. And yeah, that's why I was very clear. It's like for Menlo Park, it looks like Teslas are not the future because I do know that for for some other departments, they have a different a different experience.
Well, on that note, since we still need to vote on this item, I'll entertain a motion.
No, go ahead.
Could I offer one clarifying question?
Yes.
Would you like us to add bike sharing and exploring bike share opportunities into the bicycle engagement action? Just so we can have that as part of the motion?
Yes.
Was car sharing ever included in that one as well? Not in, obviously not in this exact item, but is car sharing somehow at all reflected in?
It's not reflected in the plan.
Because I know we've talked about it with like S R I with the development there. And I'm curious if there might be a a couple of spots with a couple of cars at a public private partnership, something to explore. I don't know.
We could add that to to three point three increased E V access and just exploring car shares. And then we could add to four point seven bicycle engagement. It's provide educational engagement opportunities to support cyclists of all ages. We could explore and add exploring bike share to that one. That's an easy addition.
I think bike share, car share, scooter share, whatever is works are all interesting and important, especially as we go downtown and build more affordable housing and also in the Bayfront area and just throughout the city. I think that whatever we can do to get people out of cars.
We could perhaps just add a separate measure to cap strategy number four, reducing vehicle miles traveled. That's exploring car share, bike share and scooter share. Since having a car share would enable folks to go car free and take transit more, I think it would support reducing vehicle miles traveled. So we could have a share action under strategy four, maybe four point ten.
Okay, so I'm just going to add, I don't know if this is at all related, but we did recently get an email, I think, to C C I N or maybe it came to council people from Arizona who complained that there was not enough bike racks at both Burgess Park and Willow Oaks Park. And so if that can be, I don't know if that's part of this or if that's someone else, but he she had pictures of bikes being leaned up against like fences and all of this stuff. So you guys are saying bikes and I remember that and that's bike. So I'm just adding that. If it goes somewhere else, then then that's fine. It can go somewhere else.
I just look back at our public works director and see if if there's any comment on bike racks.
Hi, good evening, council members. Azalea Mitch, Public Works Director. We have been working with the Complete Streets Commission on prioritizing locations for bicycle racks. We actually also completed an inventory of what we have in house so that we can then start issuing work orders for installations. But we're waiting for feedback from from the commission on the priority locations.
One more suggestion that I'm not sure if this is the right place, but I see safe routes to school here. And we could greatly reduce, I would like to see this expanded to private schools as well as public schools. There's a lot of car traffic coming out of some of the private schools. And charter.
Charter and private, yeah, we can definitely add that without amending the scope. The scope is broad enough to to schools.
And and also charter schools.
Yeah, I can. I can talk with our transportation team about what that would look like.
Could I make a motion to move forward with staff's option one on prewiring? Ask or ask the city staff review the state code twenty twenty five for potential amendment opportunities and come back as it makes sense, probably the next year, to include the bike, car, scooter sharing under V M T reduction. And I forgot the last one. And safe routes to school for all school as opposed to a certain kind of school.
And adopting the the resolution to amend the cap with the updated implementation scope of work for twenty five.
Yes, thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by city council member Dower and a second by city council member Nash to adopt a resolution to amend the 2030 climate action plan to include an implementation scope of work for 25, 2025, 2030. And directing staff to pursue option one for free wiring, review the state code 2025 for potential amendment opportunities, including bike, car and scooter shares under strategy 4.10 and include safe routes for all schools. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with city council member Woolison absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And at this time, since it is 10:56, we will need to vote or nod our heads to stay past 11.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item H2. H2 is to adopt a resolution to approve the successor agreement between the city of Menlo Park and the Menlo Park Police Officers Association expiring is 31st, 2027. Here to introduce the item is our administrative services director, Brittany Mello.
Good evening, city council. Before you this evening is the adoption of a resolution to approve the successor labor agreement with the Menlo Park Police Officers Association or the POA. The POA is a bargaining unit that's comprised of entry and journey level police personnel in three different classifications. And we have 35 budgeted full-time equivalents this fiscal year in the POA. The existing memorandum of understanding or MOU is set to expire on August 31st. The city held a hearing to receive public input before initiating negotiations with the POA back on May 21st. And Charles Sakai of Sloan Sakai Young and Wong was appointed by the city council to serve as the city's chief negotiator. Mr. Sakai and human resources staff participated in negotiations with the POA from June through August, resolving matters by joint recommendation on August 1st. POA members ratified the tentative agreement on August 15th. The key terms of the agreement are summarized within the staff report and shown in the redlined version of the MOU in exhibit A of attachment A. These items include a three-year term, a 3% general salary increase each year of the agreement, a 2% market-based adjustment effective this September, and a salary step adjustment in February 2025, an adjustment to longevity pay to help attract lateral police officers to join the city, and adjustments to the employee retirement cost share, the city's contributions to flexible benefits plans, language related to disciplinary action, and other MOU language cleanup for clarity and compliance with state law. The total fiscal impact for the proposed three-year agreement is approximately $1,316,117 for an average annual cost of $438,706. Staff is requesting an additional appropriation of $177,867 to fund the MOU term for the remainder of the fiscal year 24, 25. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. Are there any clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment? City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item H2, adopt a resolution to approve the successor agreement between the city of Menlo Park and the Menlo Park Police Officers Association expiring August 31st, 2027. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Final call for public comment on regular business item H2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve item H2.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs and a second by city council member Dower to adopt a resolution to approve the successor agreement between the city of Menlo Park and the Menlo Park POA expiring August 31st, 2027 and appropriate the additional funds from the unassigned general fund balance in the fiscal year of 2024, 25 budget. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with city council member Woolison absent.
Thank you. Our next item is H3. Adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the management compensation plan document for unrepresented management classifications effective September 8th, 2024. Here to introduce this item is our administrative services director, Brittany Mello.
Thank you, mayor. So the next item before you is to adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the management compensation plan. Unrepresented management employees are neither self-organized nor represented by an exclusive bargaining representative. This group is comprised of 38 diverse classifications with 28 budgeted full-time equivalents this fiscal year. In 2018, the city council adopted a tiered salary structure for unrepresented management, which groups classifications together based on span of control, level of supervision and specialized education. This structure established a benchmark at the department director level and sets appropriate salary differentials between each of the other tiers and this benchmark. In recent months, the city has had three unsuccessful recruitments for management level job openings, which have a negative impact on the continuity of business operations, progress towards related city council priorities and employee morale and workload. In response to these failed recruitments, a salary survey of the benchmark department director position was conducted. This survey found that the benchmark was 7.5% below the market median. Based on these results, the proposed amendments to the management compensation plan include a 7.5% market-based adjustment to the salary range maximums in each salary tier. The adjustment to the salary range maximums does not constitute a general salary increase for the unrepresented management group. Salary increases for this group are based on performance and the city manager determines any merit-based increases on an individual employee basis. Additionally, in looking at the existing salary ranges, there is substantial variation in the range width between the salary minimum and the maximum of each tier. The proposed amendments to the salary range minimums would set a standard range width of 35% for each tier and would help to realign the minimums to the set differentials in accordance to our salary structure. There are two employees who would receive an automatic increase to move them up from their current salaries to the new minimum salary in their applicable salary range. Making these salary range adjustments would help the city to be more competitive in the market for attracting top talent. And it would help to maintain appropriate internal relationships between supervisors and managers by avoiding wage compaction following supervisor pay increases. The proposed amendments to the compensation plan are summarized within the staff report and shown in the redline version in exhibit A of attachment A. Staff is requesting an additional appropriation of $16,429 to fund these amendments for the remainder of the fiscal year. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item H3, adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the management compensation plan document for unrepresented management classifications effective September 8th, 2024. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine. In person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item H3. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve this item.
I will move.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by city council member Nash and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to adopt a resolution to approve amendments to the management compensation plan document for unrepresented management positions effective September 8th, 2024. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with city council member Woolison absent.
Thank you. The next regular business item is item H4. Adopt a resolution to amend the salary schedule effective September 8th, 2024. Here to introduce this item is our administrative services director, Brittany Mello.
Thank you. And so this item would amend the salary schedule to incorporate the just approved salary adjustments related to the Police Officers Association and the corresponding adjustments for the Police Sergeants Association to retain a set 15% differential between these two groups. It would also include the adjustments related to the, just the just approved unrepresented management group. Both the POA and the unrepresented management group appropriations were just completed, but an additional appropriation in the amount of $68,906 would be needed specific to the Police Sergeants Association. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. And at this time, are there any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? City Clerk Karen, can you take public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item H4, adopt a resolution to amend the salary schedule effective December 8th, 2024. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner cell phone, star nine now. In person, by completing a speaker card at that back table and returning to me at the clerk's desk. Final call for public comment on regular business item H4. No hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And I also would like to thank staff and the city manager for bifurcating the salary schedule from the actual amendment. And that is for me so that I have an opportunity to vote no on the salary schedule only because of the low wages I believe our teachers receive. And until we do something about it, I will continue to vote no on the salary schedule. And at this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by city council member Nash and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to adopt a resolution to approve the following amendments to the city of Menlo Park salary schedule effective September 8th, 2024. One, salary adjustment related to the successor memorandum of understanding between the city and the Menlo Park POA. Number two, corresponding salary adjustment to the Menlo Park Police Sergeants Association to retain a set salary difference with the POA as required by the PSA, MOU. And number three, salary adjustments related to the unrepresented management group. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
And the motion passes with Mayor Taylor dissenting and city council member Woolison absent. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Our next item on the agenda is informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, a city staff member or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of these informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public has, wants to make a comment on our informational items, I1, city council agenda topics, I2, police department quarterly update for April through June of this year, or I3, the Tesla pile, police patrol vehicle pilot update. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. And this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items I1 through I3. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. The next item on our agenda is city manager's report. To introduce this item is our city manager, Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council for working through all the various items on tonight's agenda. I know it was a heavy agenda and I think the council was able to get through everything productively. So then I did want to call out a few things. One is just a, a thanks to all those involved with the summer concert series this year. Ran over a total of nine concerts at Fremont Park and Kelly Park. So a lot of, a lot of energy, positive energy, community building through that. And a lot of great staff work to, to pull that off. So thank you to the team for that. And then earlier, there was a great promotion from one of your speakers about the Bell Haven Pool. So I'd just like to amplify that, that there's a, can be a open house for the Bell Haven Pool scheduled for next Thursday, September 5th at 6:00 PM. And then there, there will be an open house for the Burgess Pool later in the month on September 26. And finally, just a reminder that the registration period for fall recreation classes is now open. So those are a few updates for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager Murphy. The next item on the agenda is city council member reports. Are there any reports from our last city council meeting? Councilmember Dower?
A, a request that I have that actually mirrors something that Vice Mayor Combs mentioned earlier. I've been in conversation with Mr. Greg Ferris and in conversation talking about annexation for a long time since I joined the city council. And I, I do appreciate the, that creating a space for input and not, not additional work, but just I think from where we are sharing directly to folks would be useful. So I'm going to ask to agendize this. And I know there's, we now have a new process for that, so I can fill out the form. But I just want to vocalize for the public and for the folks who came earlier today that I'm going to, I would like to formally agendize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dower. Councilmember Nash?
So I'd like to report out from a Peninsula Clean Energy meeting. And first of all, we now have three Menlo Park residents on the community advisory committee. Cheryl Schaaf, Michael Clausen and John McKenna are all representing Menlo Park on the community advisory committee for Peninsula Clean Energy. Also, almost 200 electrical EV chargers ports will be installed at Anton Menlo through a PCE incentive program for multifamily properties that provides technical support and up to 75% of the cost. And they are recruiting multifamily units, buildings for that. And if anyone is interested, it's take a look at peninsulacleaneenergy.com. But we're getting almost 200 ports, some are installed, some are just EV ready at one of our multifamily properties in Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And do we have any other report outs?
No, I'll just, I was planning to ask the city clerk to, yes, send me the form, but since, no, but thank you. You, you will spare me having to fill out the form. So that, however this form looks, so, so that, that works for me.
And just to add to that discussion, I actually filled the form out for a different topic just to feel how easy it is, City Clerk Karen, it is fabulous. I appreciate it very much. It makes the process much easier. And you get a reply back and an email of your request.
And can you use chat GPT?
I have one other, one comment that I would like to make, actually two. I want to give a special thanks to our EQC members for all the work that was done on the climate action plan and also to our staff. The plan was amazing and it is great to see a lot of hard work going to a document and actually get implemented. So I just wanted to thank you all for your work. And also, even though I believe- Now also, even though I believe we have one person here in public comment, um, left, maybe online as well. But just want to thank everyone that provided public comment this evening. I know that sometimes it can be frustrating because you feel like your voice is not heard. The fact is it is. The city really does have to, um, scale, um, anything that's outside of its priorities. Which is why I appreciate the form that City Clerk Herring put together because it lists, does your item fall under these four categories, which are the city council adopted priorities? And I think that is important to keep in mind because there is a lot of work that needs to be done, but the most important is that we provide basic services to all of our residents equally. And so just wanted to share that. So thank you all and good night. This meeting is adjourned.